All right, we are live and recording and we are calling to order the Tuesday, May 18th meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. And our first agenda item tonight is a closed session. The matter is conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. And we're going to start by taking public comment on this closed session item. So if any members of the public would like to comment on our closed session item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed comments for our closed session?
No, my recommend, we did not receive any emails, public comments.
Thank you, and I'm not seeing any hands up from our one member of the public in attendance. So with that, the council is going to adjourn to closed session. So we're going to go to a separate private meeting and we'll come back to this open meeting at 6:30 to start the open portion of our council meeting. Great, looks like we are all here, so we can go ahead and call to order the public portion of the Tuesday, May 18th meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. We will start with a roll call, Rebecca, if you please.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Mongan.
Here.
Vice Marcus Isa.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here, thank you Rebecca, please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, we're going to report out of closed session, so we just came back from a closed session on the matter of conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, and the council did not take any reportable actions on that item. Which brings us to item number two, open time for public comment. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items that are not on our agenda, and members of the public will be given three minutes apiece to make their comment. You can raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And we're going to start with Roy, and then go to Margaret.
Good evening, we're going to do a little what-if thought experiment tonight. What if the town council members use the same approach to building a new town hall as has been used around climate change? You know, fire, brimstone, smoke, rapidly rising seas, ever increasing severity and frequency of killer storms? Well, here's the corollary of the council's position related to the town hall. Inflation will increase 20 to 40% annually for an indefinite period of time. There will be a five-year period of economic downturn. Sales revenue will decrease 40 to 80%. Unemployment will increase to 15 to 50%. The stock market will crater and lose at least 65% of its value. To sustain government and government employees, a sustainability property tax will be imposed. $100 for every $1,000 in property valuation. Quick math, if your property is valued at $1 million, you'll owe $100,000 more a year in property tax. There you have it, the FUD meistering forecast. Ridiculous, more plausible than the climate change FUD and FUD, F-U-D, fear, uncertainty, doubt. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy, we're going to go to Margaret next.
Good evening, everyone, I have a question. I don't expect that it can be answered by anyone, but perhaps it'll give everyone something to think about. The question is, where and what is the policy of the town of Corder Madera around short-term rentals? This has come up before, it's been classified as a quality of life issues in different agendas. We've spent a lot of time in this town talking about the quality of life for dogs and dog parks and how to enforce that, and nothing about the quality of life for people who have a short-term rental that's advertised as a bed and breakfast on the websites. And nothing has been done to clarify the policy, enforce the policy, it's been reported to the town, and before the tourist season picks up and everybody starts traveling around, I think that it's something that the council really needs to look at closely and immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret, and as you know and acknowledge, we can't get into substantive discussions about items that are not on our agenda, but I will ask staff if they can just follow up with you real quick, because I know that this is something that they've been thinking about as well, and just let you know what's coming forward there. And with that, I do not see any other hands up for public open time. Oh, we just got another hand go up, so we're going to go to Damian next.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, thank you. Hi, my name is Damian Morgan, Damian Morgan. I'm born and raised in Marin City, I'm a Tana Pius High School graduate, early 90s, and I spend a lot of my time in your area, I still do, over the years, sporting events, visiting friends, guys and girls. And I must say that the Twin Cities Central Marin Police Department has been horrid towards black individuals in that jurisdiction. Driving down Surpassus Drake, Tamil Vista, all those areas, I must, I'm speaking from my experience, this is not hearsay, experience. And, you know, it's important for me to call in, because I'm not sure you guys had many people calling over the past, I think you guys have flown under the radar, I don't think many have called in your meetings to tell you about Twin Cities and Central Marin. But we, I, we have data to prove what I'm saying, but I'm gonna say it again for the listeners, the audience, Central Marin, Twin Cities have actually attacked and has been horrid intimidation, fear, still fear on black individuals driving through your jurisdiction. Now it's called Central Marin, I think, yeah, I don't, I don't think I know that. So I want you to be aware of that. I'm not sure how much you guys have discussed this, but to know that we are watching, there are some people who are in the Marin City area have experienced over the years, many and many times being pulled over, many and many times for no reason. Many friends that I know, we talk about this, the most aggressive police departments in Marin, you at the top of the list, top two, one or two, I want you to know that. And I'm going to hear the presentation from the police chief, I want to hear it, I'm very interested in hearing what he has to say, I think it has statistics on there, and I want to hear his numbers, I want to, you know, so you'll be hearing from me, because you guys know what I'm saying, this is serious, in the 1990s, no one wanted to hear what we had to say about being over policed and harassed. People are listening now, thank you, I'm done.
Thank you very much, Damian, and if you wouldn't mind, I'd just ask you to send me an email, I'd like to follow up with you, and my email is on the town's website, but it's ebeckman@tcmail.org. Thank you very much.
I will.
Great, thank you. And with that, I don't see any other hands up for public open time. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments for open time?
No, we did not receive any emailed public comments for open time.
Great, thank you. And with that, we're going to close open time for public comment, and that brings us to presentations, and our presentation for tonight is from the Central Marin Police Authority, it's the annual.
Hi, Mayor Beckman froze on my screen, I don't know if everyone else can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I can hear you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Beckman and members of the council. So what we have here is our annual traffic and crime report for 2020, and I'll go ahead and start by just saying that 2020 was a very challenging year for everybody, including the police department, you know, with the pandemic especially. You'll see when we get to these calls for service and statistics, what happened in March with regards to calls for service and how we reacted and handled that. It was a new type of policing for us, because we've never had to deal with anything like that and the fear of the pandemic. So what we had to do is change how we policed a lot with regards to how proactive we should be in terms of doing traffic stops or interacting with the public face-to-face, or handle it via telephone. In addition, we had to focus on keeping our staff safe and not getting them affected with COVID, as well as really keeping the community safe, because what we didn't want to have is one of our officers get infected and then become basically a super spreader in town, where they would go around and have a lot of interactions and spread it through the communities. We imposed a lot of different ways of policing that was really kind of pulling back from in the past, and we changed a lot of how we did business in our station. And I would like to say that, knock on wood, we did not have one confirmed COVID case that occurred from one of our employees catching it while at work, nor do we have a confirmed COVID transmission between an employee and a member of the public. So that worked out really well, and I think we're a little bit unique in that respect. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Give me just a minute here. So, right off the bat, you can see, looking at the very bottom, our calls per month, this is how many calls for service we have, we average about 40,000 to 44,000 a year, we were kind of chugging along there in January and February, and then it just kind of fell off the face of the earth in March and April, and then it started to creep back up in the summer. We overall, Corder Madera last year had about a 26% share, we went from overall about a 29% reduction in calls from service from previous years, and specifically with regard to last year. In terms of where we've had the bulk of our calls for service, you can see Village and Corder Madera Town Center, no real surprise, that is the bulk of our calls there every year, and it continued this year even with COVID going on. I don't believe we had another one in Corder Madera, oh, Corder Madera Town Park, we had quite a few calls there last year, a lot of it was with regards to COVID and masks and things like that, but also we had an increase of calls of dogs off-leash that we were handling along with code enforcement officers from the town of Corder Madera. In terms of calls for service types, as you can see, nothing, the good news is there's no big crimes that jump out at you here, this is the bulk of our times on traffic stops, 911 calls, things like that, assisting the fire department on medical emergencies. And that actually was our number one call for service last year. These calls for service make up about 30% of all calls for service in Corder Madera, assisting the fire on medical calls, traffic stops, 911 hangups, alarms, things like that. In terms of traffic stops, you can see we had a reduction, we made 52% less traffic stops last year than the previous year, and once again, that was mainly due to COVID and not wanting to interact face-to-face that close with a lot of citizens, you know, fearing the spread and things like that, and there really is no way to do a traffic stop without getting very close to somebody. So that was a decision we made, and you can see how that was affected by the traffic collisions and our crime stats a little bit later. Where we conducted our traffic stops last year, the numbers were way down, you can see none of these are actually in Corder Madera, these are our high points, but the main points we ended up having traffic stops were, this is where they ended, not necessarily where the violation occurred, was the Village of Corder Madera, Corder Madera Town Center, Redwood at Warham, 780 Tamil Pious is basically the overpass there, and San Clemente and Redwood. Those spots right there comprised of 20% of all the traffic stops in Corder Madera. In terms of reports, these are calls for service where we have to take a physical report, generally they're felony crimes, but they can be major traffic accidents and things like that. These are pretty much very time-consuming calls for service reports are, from the time an officer gets dispatched to the time the reports, he handles the call, he or she, the report gets finished and approved by everybody, you're looking at several hours, it could be a quick report, you might be three hours total time, it could range up to 10 hours, just depending on what it was. We did have a reduction, as you recall, our calls for service were down about 29%, our reports were down about 25%. And you can see, once again, taken by month, how they kind of, just that steep decline from January down to April. Where did our, take the bulk of our reports throughout our jurisdiction, once again, Corder Madera Town Center and the Village were the main points, and the only other one that was in Corder Madera was the Best Western at Corder Madera, and that's kind of an anomaly, we haven't usually had a lot of reports that we take there, but I will say that last year, I believe the Best Western was used for some temporary housing for various people due to COVID, and we had an increased calls for service there, where we were getting called out there to deal with various issues. I'm going to just shrink the screen down a little bit, just so I can see, sorry. In terms of, we'll talk about crimes now, and what, how did our crime stats look compared to 2019? We can look at Corder Madera, but it's almost easier to just look at the total, you know, in terms of, that looks staggering, oh my god, we had a 600% increase in aggravated assaults, well, we went from one to seven, overall throughout our jurisdiction, we went up 6%. In terms of simple assaults, we did have an increase of about 41%, but overall in our jurisdiction, down seven. In terms of burglary, that's your property crimes, that's your car getting broken into, your business getting broken into, your home being broken into, we had a decrease of 52% in Corder Madera. And overall decrease of 45%. A lot of that, I'll get to a little bit later, a lot of that was a real decrease in auto burglaries and residential burglaries, which makes sense, because all burglaries in our jurisdiction, for the most part, take place when nobody is home, and with people working at home during the pandemic, they were less likely to become victims, which is good. Larceny and theft, that's any theft basically over $1,000, we had a decrease in Corder Madera of 31% there. Vehicle theft, you can see we had a big jump from 17 to 34, and overall throughout our whole jurisdiction, an increase of 28%. I'm going to turn to some notes I have here. Sorry, give me just a minute. So I did look, I was curious, when you look at these total stats and with the pandemic and COVID, how did our crime stats kind of stack up? All I could really find was some major cities in California of LA, Oakland, San Francisco, and San Diego. Generally though, the statistics do mirror in the suburbs with property crimes, so I took a look at it. In those four big cities, they had a decrease in larceny of 34%, we had a decrease in 27%. They had an increase in vehicle thefts of 24%, we had an increase of 28%, and they had an actual increase in commercial burglaries of 26%, where we had a pretty significant decrease in burglaries. Terms of part, these are part-two crimes and other crimes, I usually just pick these because they're generally of interest to the community members and the council. You can see a huge reduction in drug offenses from 2019 to 2020, a lot of that is fewer traffic stops resulting in fewer proactive arrests. You can see pretty significant declines there, positional controlled substance under the influence, things like that. Violation of probation, another decrease due to decreased productivity, less battery and obstruction, that's when people fight with us, when we're taking them into custody or detaining them, and once again, I think that decrease is mainly just due to less interactions with people in general. Terms of DUI, once again, a big decrease in the amount of arrests we made, I don't think that's because people were using drugs or drinking less during the pandemic, if anything was probably up, it was just our less interactions with people. And then one thing that did go up quite a bit, which is always disheartening, is domestic violence, and that shouldn't come as too much of a surprise, when you have families cooped up in the house with little options, sometimes this tends to escalate, and we saw a pretty significant jump, 14 to 37, and with regards to violation of domestic violence restraining orders, a little bit of a jump there as well. And then I'll point out, you know, obviously shoplifting went down quite a bit, stores weren't open as much, mental commitments, these are mental health holds, they went down a little bit, but overall, we were seeing a lot of mental health calls for service, they just weren't quite rising to where someone needed to actually be taken to the hospital. But we, according to my officers, they did see quite an increase in that, sorry, the slide keeps changing, it's very, very touchy. And finally, your disorderly conduct, which is your, basically your drunk in public, another decrease in that, plus people being on the street. And even though the crime was down so much last year, you can see that there was, the actual amount of loss by victims went up quite a bit, so even though there was less crimes, the amount, the value of the property being taken still shot up quite a bit, and there's a difference of about $800,000 increase there. And let's see, we're talking about what type of, what are the big offenses in Corder Madera, the big one still is burglary, even though that went down about 50%, we still had 96 total burglaries, to give you an idea of how that compares to last year. In 2019, we had 148 automobile burglaries, in 2020, we had 45, we had 44 commercial burglaries in 2019, in 2020, we had 25, and our residential burglaries went from 15 in 2019 to 11 in 2020. Moving and parking citations, once again, pretty significant decrease in the amount of tickets we wrote, specifically with regards to parking, we don't do a lot of parking enforcement in Corder Madera, because you don't have quite the large traditional downtown that requests it, but we did have a big decrease in San Anselmo and Larkspur with parking citations. In terms of moving citations, with about 3,000 traffic stops, about one and three received a citation, and two and three received a warning. And traffic collision, so we did a lot less traffic enforcement, but we ended up actually with 44% fewer collisions than the year before, and really that's because of fewer cars on the street throughout the year of 2020. Where are our main collision sites? The ones in the shopping centers of Corder Madera Town Center and the Village, those are really your low speed, that can be someone backs into somebody, it could be a hit-and-run, it could be a door ding, so, well, not a door ding, they have to actually be traveling to cause a collision. And then 780 Tamil Pious, that's your Tamil Pious overpass, you did have six collisions there, that's about average or a little below from previous years. And then I'm going to just go straight to the Corder Madera slide here. Notes. So in Corder Madera, non-injury accidents, we had 73 last year, the year before, we had 140. In terms of hit-and-run crimes, where, that's usually in a parking lot where someone hits your car and doesn't leave a note, that stayed about the same, and in terms of minor injury collisions, it went down from 19 to 14, and I don't have last year's hit-and-run total. So what we're kind of seeing this in all three of our towns, is what happened is our non-injury accidents were cut in about half, but our minor injury accidents stayed about the same, and that's really because traffic was flowing pretty good throughout the pandemic, so if there was an accident, it generally was of some significance and not necessarily offender under. And then finally, here's just some comparisons, overall, we already talked about calls for service and traffic stops, reports taken, traffic collisions, all that, you can see the changes from year to year, and then we also have a five-year average here. Once again, it's, this year's stats are, I don't want to say they're useless, but they're very unique because of the pandemic, and it'll be interesting how we do next year, it'll obviously probably revert back to 2019 levels with regards to many things, but you never know, maybe collisions will stay down, maybe crime will stay down, but my guess is it'll, it'll creep back up, just like everything in society is going to. And with that, I will answer any questions you have.
Chief, thank you so much, I'm sorry I got booted off the wifi right before your presentation started, but appreciate you being here, appreciate your fantastic report, as always. We will start with questions from council members for Chief Norton, and then we'll go to public comment. Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, just a couple, and I appreciate all the work that you and the officers do throughout Corder Madera and also San Anselmo and Larkspur. Were there any stats on pedestrian incidents, pedestrians getting hit or anything like that, I didn't, I don't remember seeing any.
Yeah, that would be an injury collision, first of all. So let me just go back, sorry. I'm not going to share my screen again, just because it's a bit much for me. So in Corder Madera, you had 14 minor injury collisions. There wasn't a huge, you know, for the entire year, you had 14, which averages about one a month, most of those are going to be vehicle, some are probably bicycle, there may have been a pedestrian one, but I don't have that specific number, but it's, it's going to be single digits at most, and those are generally major injury collisions, when a pedestrian gets hit, it's very rarely minor, and I don't believe there was a major injury collision in Corder Madera last year.
Okay, and then I can't remember, but on traffic stops, is there other data you're collecting, or you're required to be collecting next year, I couldn't remember how that worked?
Yeah, are you referring to RIPA?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, RIPA is, it goes active, officially active, and we're reporting it to the state of January next year. We've actually implemented it, and we're training our officers right now, and we're beta testing it, but we want to make sure we have it up and running for a few months before we're required to report it. It is kind of new, we are going with an app-based one where you use your phone, it's called Rippleog, we have trained our officers on it, I believe we started collecting data April 1st, and I've looked at it, and there's nothing really of concern so far showing up, and, you know, possibly we'll go live with it and put it on our, we won't be reporting anything to the state, because they don't want our data till January, but we could put some of that information up on our website if people want to see it.
Okay, and just for the benefit of people on the call and in the public, can you just kind of describe what that system is?
Yeah, RIPA is a new requirement, it's been required of big agencies for a couple of years now, like LAPD, but for the smaller agencies, which I think are classified as 100 officers or less, we're required to all do it, so that basically covers all of Marin County, we're required to start it in January, and what it is, is not any traffic stop, any detention, anytime we go out with someone and they're not free to walk away from us, we have to report to the state why that person was contacted, the reason for it, and then a lot of, it's about 30 things, it's a lot of the perceived gender of the person contacted, the perceived race, the perceived sexual orientation, things like that, basically.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to catch off, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, that's a state mandate that we'll be reporting to the state in January, but we are actually collecting data on that right now.
Okay, thanks, and just one last question, staffing levels during the last year or so have pretty much remained the same, or?
Yeah, yeah, we were, we've had, you know, just like everybody, we've had some people leave for different reasons and retire, but we've been lucky enough to get some really good people back on, but there's always that overlap, it takes about a year from when we hire somebody to when they're driving around by themselves on the street, because you have about a six-month academy, and then a six-month field training program.
Okay, all right, thanks, appreciate it, sure.
Thank you, Fred, any other questions for Chief Norton? Yeah, Leela?
Hi, Chief Norton, thanks for your presentation tonight. I just had a couple of quick questions, one was on that one slide where you talked about how the number of property crimes have gone down, but the actual value lost had like doubled, I just wondered if you had thoughts about what, how to explain that, or what's going on there? And then my other question is just with respect to the sort of comparison cities, you sort of said you couldn't find, you know, similar cities, so you found data for like LA and stuff like that, it sounded like our numbers were, you know, at least as good as LA or something, so that's good, but I'm just sort of curious, do we have, you know, access to data, it sounds like we don't, you know, for cities that are of similar size, just sort of wonder going forward, you know, would it be helpful to have some sort of data sharing system so that we can have access to that kind of data?
Yeah, so I'll start with your second question. You know, comparing it to Larkspur, for instance, it's always about the same, when we compare it to San Anselmo, generally the crime is a little bit higher in Corder Madera and Larkspur, and really that's because what we find is, it's kind of a, when we arrest people, it's a different type of person, a lot of the people we arrest for crimes in Corder Madera and Larkspur do not reside in our county, I think that's just being by the freeway, you're tend to get people, I mean, we arrest people from the South Bay in Corder Madera and Larkspur, that's kind of unheard of in San Anselmo, you know, there's just not a draw there, so generally the people we're arresting out there are actually, not necessarily living there, but living nearby or live in Marin, it's just kind of a different, a different type of suspect we're dealing with. I don't have specific crime comparisons for, say, a Mill Valley or a Sausalito, I know the presentation that we did kind of has evolved over the years, it's, the legal requirement is to come and do a traffic, sorry, it's really just, it started as traffic accidents, and it's kind of morphed over the years with our previous chief, Todd Cusamano and myself, where we started just presenting more and more things, because, you know, traffic collisions are interesting, but at the end of the day, there's other things you'd like to know about, right? You know, traffic collisions are important, but I think a lot of people want to know, like, what's crime like? So I'm not sure other towns are required to do that, or if they do that, but I can look into that, and I'm sorry, your first question, I got kind of involved in that one, what was your first question?
No worries, that was about the disparity between the property crime numbers versus the value.
Right. I don't know, I have noticed though, that that value just keeps going up and up every year. Um, I, I don't know, I have noticed though that that value just keeps going up and up every year. Um. You know, I really don't have a, a clear answer, I can't just go, oh yeah, there was this one case where, you know, gold bars were taken. It's just, um, I think, I'm, I'll give you a good example, I've been here twenty years. The average theft of a bicycle right now, the value is like three to five thousand dollars. Um, when I started twenty years ago, it was probably three hundred dollars, you know, it's just the stuff being, the value of the cars being taken are off the charts, the value of the bicycles being taken. And a lot of it really is your, um, your shopping centers have changed over the years, and they're very, it's good, they're, they're very nice and high-end now. Um, but before, maybe you go in and someone would steal a hundred and fifty dollars worth of sunglasses. Now they might go into um, you know, Lululemon and take a stack of tights this tall, which doesn't look like much, but at a hundred dollar a pair of tights, they walk out with twelve thousand dollars. So um, you just have a lot of things like that. It's not so much thefts from the houses that have spiked that, it's really your, your higher-end shopping centers.
Gotcha, thank you.
Great, thank you, Leela, and Chief, I wanted to say I appreciate you guys giving us the, the kind of comprehensive overview as opposed to just traffic. Uh, any other questions for uh, the chief before we go to public comment here? And if not, we will turn this over to members of the public now, so if you would like to make any public comment on the presentation, we just saw her ask any questions. Please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org, and as always, we'll be doing three minutes a person. And we're gonna start with Ava, followed by Dan.
Thanks so much, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I apologize, I'm on my commute home, so you may hear a little bit of traffic noise. Um, yeah, I, I appreciate um, the breakdown of the data, also um, the RIPA numbers and the explanation of that, I do wanna say that I am concerned in general in Marin County, that there seems to be uh, an interest almost in RIPA data exclusively, where, you know, going forward, we're gonna, we're gonna start compiling this data that we should have been compiling for the last five decades, so we're gonna look at race, we're gonna look at gender, et cetera, et cetera. And the kinds of stops and how it relates to arrests and prosecutions. But I am, I'm concerned that it's kind of a get out of jail free card um, for the way things have been done in the county, uh, I was able to get arrests referred to prosecution for initially nineteen ninety through twenty twenty. And now I have nineteen eighty-nine through twenty twenty, so that's a, that's a thirty-two-year um, span. And it covers every law enforcement agency in Marin County. And what I'm finding is, is pretty terrifying. Uh. The Sheriff Office, um, Sausalito PD, Mill Valley PD, each one of those entities over the last thirty-one years specifically, has been arresting black individuals at a rate over eight times their demographic presence in the county. And this contrast to like, the, the counties across the deep south where blacks are being arrested at two to three times their demographic presence in the county. So, you know. We have an extreme problem in Marin, I haven't crunched the numbers for Corder Madera, um, but, or Central Marin Police. But I will be looking at that, but I think it's uh, I think it's something that, you know, it's, it should not be ignored in a larger overview of, of what law enforcement in the county has been doing, and what specifically our own department has been doing, and to look only at RIPA data and to kind of pat ourselves on the back for finally compiling this material. Um, and these stats is, is weak tea, I, that's, that's the best way I could describe it, we're gonna have to take a look at what each individual police department in the county of Marin has been doing um, for decades, and we do have some indication of that. Because we do have arrests referred to prosecution now for a full thirty-two-year span. They didn't record anything prior to nineteen eighty-nine, um, which is telling. Um, all of that stuff should have been compiled, but it should be something that your police department should be looking at very closely, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ava, we're gonna go to Dan next, followed by Damian.
Hi, this is actually Eileen Phipps. Um, I have just a, a couple um, questions regarding mental health issues. I'm wondering what kind of tools, training, and assistance you have in responding to mental uh, calls involving mental health issues, um, and what you do in order to prevent escalation and injury to the person with mental health problems? And second, um, what other tools or resources would you need as a department to respond to calls like that involving mental health issues, thank you.
Thank you very much, Eileen.
Would you like to respond, Mayor Beckman?
Chief, let's get through all the comments, and then uh, when we bring it back to council for discussion, I think that would be a good opportunity to kind of discuss uh, all the comments that we heard, if you don't mind. Thank you, sir, uh, we're gonna go to Damian next.
Hi, um. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Damian Morgan here, uh, born and raised in Marin City, I'm a Tamm High graduate. Again, I've spent many, many um, days and nights in San Anselmo on down to Corder Madera, uh, through sports and friends and uh, more, and you know, go on and on. Um, I appreciate uh, my good friend, Ava, for getting that data from the county. Um, the data is telling to what I have experienced in my life near Marin County. Um, I think it, it tells a lot, and I'm sure there's even more to it, because there are time, you know, what cops do, uh, what you guys do, um, uh, uh, what, what you're good at is pulling a black man over and asking if they're on parole or probation, and asking to search them illegally, and if there's, and what you, what you do is not give, not give tickets. Therefore, it's almost unfound, if you don't give a ticket, and if you don't get that leeway or that uh, easy way in to search, not, they're not on probation or parole, then you let them go. So some data is out there, I'm sure it's eight times our demographic um, presence, it's probably fifteen times, because a lot of times we let go. And no one knows about it, you know, like ghosts, a ghost movement, a underground movement. No one knows, and no one wanted to hear it. But I'm glad you're listening now. Mister Mayor, I will reach out to you soon. And we'll have a constructive conversation regarding what has happened in your area um, over years. Detimidation. Uh, harassment. Our civil rights were taken from us many, many occasions in this area, again, coming down certain parts of your town, Tamil Vista, coming down by uh, uh, Drake High School, um, Left Bank, where the Left Bank Restaurant is, those areas where you have those one road, uh, one-lane roads, where cops will see who's driving a black man, and would literally make illegal U-turns and just pull us over. It's amazing. So, I have so much to say, I'll leave it at that. Thanks for listening, but we want to, I want to discuss this with you more in detail, this is not hearsay. I didn't pull this from a magazine or Facebook, this is me, Damian, being born and raised in this community. Proud of this, proud of who I am, I love the beauty of this community, we have a lot of work to do, a lot of work to do. Constructive conversations, real conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Damian, and I will.
Oh, 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 one more thing, I have ten seconds, um. Chief, uh, respectfully, respectfully, Chief, you said you were, you were commenting regarding the uh, mental health question. Please, if you, if you so will, comment regarding what you know about pulling blacks over in your jurisdiction, thank you.
Thank you, Damian, uh, we're gonna go next to Pat.
Hi. Thanks for your report today, Chief, I just want to draw attention to one area that I know there aren't statistics for, and that are the near misses. And particularly along Tamil Pious Drive in front of the community center, and where there are now, at this time, I think, three hundred kids playing soccer. And cars are racing by on that road at well over thirty miles an hour, they get the little warning up close, but by time they hit Eastman Drive, if that light is green, I've seen them fly through there daily at thirty-five, forty miles an hour, so um, it could be a school zone there, we actually checked, and because it is contiguous with Neil Common School through the park and no blockage, and people can walk through there, we could make it a twenty-five mile an hour zone. But I also think if it was just policed the way Mill Valley polices Miller Avenue, people wouldn't speed there anymore, if there were just a few more tickets issued, maybe people kind of got the idea that COVID made everything slow down, and now they can speed up, so. Hope we can do something on that um, pivotal little intersection in town where so much of our community comes together right there, thanks very much.
Thank you, Pat, and I am not seeing any other hands up uh, for public comment on this item, Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this presentation?
No, Mayor Beckman, we did not receive any emailed comments.
Great, thank you, then with that, we're gonna close public comment and bring it back uh, to the council for any uh, last comments, and I'd like to invite Chief Norton to uh, respond to any points that he might uh, want to address that were brought up by the public. And uh, so Chief, if you, if you'd like to, you're, you're certainly welcome to.
Yeah, absolutely, um, I'll start with um, Mr. Morgan, Damian Morgan, it sounds like um, he's gonna be reaching out to you, Mayor. You're also welcome, if you're still on the line, Damian, to reach out to me directly. Um, you can just call our number or write me an email at mnorton@centralmarinpolice.org. I'm very interested in, in hearing some of these personal experiences you had, and I'd love to look into them and, and talk to you about it, I, I grew up in Marin County myself. Um, I'm not, you know, I don't wanna dispel any of it, but you know, I have worked as a patrol officer for about ten years before promoting. And I can vouch for that, I did not make any of the type of stops that are being mentioned here today, and I don't think the majority of my department has as well, but if there is evidence out there that that was occurring or is still occurring, I obviously wanna hear about it. And, and here are some specific examples that we can look up. And um, you know, if, if you, if you'd like to reach out to me, you're welcome to, if you prefer to go through the mayor, um, that's fine too, and, and, and Mister Mayor, you can relay some of that information to me. Um, it is pretty easy, I think we can go back um, about thirty years and, and look up specific individuals, not only did they receive tickets, but how many times they've been pulled over, so. I would like to research that too, um, with respect to you, Mister Morgan, or any friends you have, and get to the bottom of it, essentially, so I look forward to, to hearing more about that and, and addressing that appropriately. Um, I'm excited about this Ripplelog, I really am. And I know, I believe her name was Ava, mentioned it was too little, too late, you know, I'll disagree with that, I think it's never too little, too late, I think moving forward is a step in the right direction. And the fact that I will have basically that comprehensive data at my fingerprint, if my fingertips for every contact one of my employees makes is huge. And the fact that we can share that with the public, and hopefully, um, you know, gain back any trust that's been lost during this last year is huge as well. So I think those are both positives going forward. Um, with, so, uh, you know, that's kind of what I, I, I'd like, like, I would have liked to say about that issue. With regards to the traffic enforcement on Tamil Pious, I will relay that to our traffic officers. Um, we did see quite an uptick in speeding specifically during COVID, when we were doing less traffic stops. And we have started uh, ramping up that enforcement in the last month. Um, and we will, I'll put that on as one of our spots, and that's something definitely that we've been spending most of our attention on is speeding vehicles. And uh, until traffic kind of gets back to normal, I think it'll be a bit of an issue, and we'll have to write quite a few tickets on that. When traffic comes back, it's kind of a natural uh, speed reducer, to be honest with you, cuz you can only go as fast as there's cars on the road. And then finally, with regards to the comment about mental health, um, we receive actually quite a bit of training. Generally, we try to get one hundred percent of all our sworn officers to a forty-hour um, kind of, it was cutting edge when, when I took it twenty years ago, I think it was the first in the nation, it's called crisis intervention training, and it was developed in Marin County. And that model has been sent all over the nation, basically. And it teaches de-escalation and really teaches humanization of homeless and mentally ill people and how to deal with them, and most of the teachers are actually people who are homeless, who are mentally ill, who maybe are recovering drug addicts, and uh, it's really good training. We try to get all our officers to that, we are, we are down um, a little bit right now, because there was no training last year due to the pandemic, and it just started it back up a month ago. Um, so we're a step in the right direction on that, and we have had a lot of new officers too, a lot of turnover. Um, in addition to that, you do receive some training in the academy, but really that's a big part of it. We also have our own crisis intervention team or CIT team that has about six members on it, and those are all people who have had the training, but have a special interest in it, cuz often what happens is let's say I get dispatched to a subject and they have some mental health issues going on, and I kind of help them, and I kind of put a Band-Aid on it. And then the next day, I'm not working. And it's a similar call, and then another employee goes out there, another officer, right? So we have this team that's kind of a clearinghouse, so when we have these contacts, all the information goes to them, and they come up with big picture plans, uh, working with other members of the community, and they might be um, between that and our HOPE team, which is our homeless outreach team, we try to um, get people the services they need, whether it's mental health or housing or basic needs. It's not really what our core mission is as a police officer, right, but this is something that's been handed to the, to police starting back in nineteen eighty, when all the state mental health hospitals closed, that's really where you saw an uptick in homelessness and mental health and all that, and there was no one really to pick up the slack, so it was law enforcement, and you know, not to speak ill of police officers in the eighties, but it's, you're pretty ill-equipped with no training to all of a sudden have to deal with something new. This has been a reality for the last twenty years plus, ever since I started day one, I went to CIT training, I was our CIT liaison for many years. And um, it's just something we're trying to help, and I'm really excited, actually, that there's been this new interest in whether you wanna call it, hey, let's take this mental health responsibility away from the police, or let's give them more resources to help them. No matter what it is, we'll always be there to help. Um, we do have mobile crisis in the county, that's kind of a couple of years old, it's great. It's um, trained, uh, as opposed to a police officer with forty hours of training, these are trained psychologists and psychiatrists that are available on call, we use them as much as possible. Unfortunately, they're only available certain hours, certain days of the week, so we reach out to them first, if they're unavailable or they're busy, we'll go handle it, often we go with them and just are there um, as a helper. Um, I have heard, and I'll let Manager Cusamano chime in, I believe at the manager level, there's actually some discussions about maybe helping fund that a little bit more, and uh, to maybe, I don't know if it'll quite be twenty-four-seven. But the idea is, we have a lot of small little towns in Marin, as opposed to trying to get, each get our own psychologist to help with these issues, is to have a pool and use this county mobile crisis unit to help everybody out, did you wanna chime in? Manager Cusamano?
Yeah, sure, we, we are, I think on, at our level, we've known, we've recognized that, you know, the crisis intervention team has been a huge success in the county, and it, it definitely needs to be a priority, and so we're working on bringing something to all of our boards and councils in the county uh, to support uh, for the next two years, uh, the crisis intervention team and training. Ensuring that over ninety-plus percent of our officers who are in uniforms on the street get that training and also have the support uh, countywide. And just the last piece, I think, Chief, are you done with your? With your comments? I wanted to add, I wanna add one more thing, I just being part of this and owning, you know, the words that were said today, it, it hits me at my heart. I'm a public servant, I've, I've been a police officer in uniform for years. Something I'm proud about, about Twin Cities and Central Marin Police Authority, I think we have more oversight than any other jurisdiction in the United States of America. You know, the, 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 the Central Marin Police Authority Council is the oversight to the police authority, it's two council members from each jurisdiction. But also, we answer to each of the jurisdictions, Corder Madera, Larkspur, and San Anselmo, and so when we have thoughtful conversations like this and what's going on, it's just not going on today, this is, this goes back to when I came on board and, and, and the early nineties, you know, um, of doing things the right way, and how do we wanna do things, how can we be better? And so we're not shying away from this, um, you know, Damian, we have a mutual friend in Adam Wolf, he, he works with me, we're cohorts. Um, he speaks highly of you as well, and you know, if, if there's any bridge for us to have discussions, and I, I welcome it, either in the public forum or privately or both, um, you know, I wanna know, and I wanna tell you that you know, we don't have a culture of what you described. But have we had bad officers over the years? Damian, yes, we have. You know, every, every agency has, and you have to have the early warning systems to recognize it, to identify it, and do something about it, and when you make a mistake, you step in front of the public and you own it, you say, this is what happened, here's the facts. We made a mistake, but this is what we did to correct it, and this is what we're gonna do to ensure it never happens again. Policing is an imperfect science, it has to do with people, and so when you hire, when you recruit, you retain, you train, it's all about traits, it's all about doing it the right way, and clearly, across the nation, we can do better, but our hearts are in the right place, culture is important, and, and no one's saying what you just, you just gave a heartfelt, I hear you, like when you were talking, I wasn't defensive, I wasn't getting upset, I'm like, God darn, you know, what happened? And I wanna know what happened, I've been part of this for years, and I've never met you, I've never heard these things. I wanna hear them, I wanna know about them, and we're gonna own our mistakes, I'm gonna share with you them. And I wanna make sure it doesn't happen again for the next evolution of leaders and people going through our community, we want to be good, that's, that's our intent. The other thing is, we have early warning systems, just in complaints, people that bring something to us either with a name on it. People that bring something to us either with a name on it or anonymously, we keep track of that and we pay attention to that as leaders. Your chief does that. And you know, just because an investigation is sustained or not, doesn't mean we just put it in the, in the file and we never think about it again. If we start to hear the same thing again, where there's smoke, there's fire, we're going to start to pay attention. We're going to start to, you know, focus on that and do things. And we have, when I talk about the few bad apples over the year, you know, 90, 95% of the, the officers could be whole and true, like Chief Norton described himself, how I think I would describe myself. But it takes one, it takes one or two to do what we're talking about and it's not okay. We can't have any. And that's the goal. And so I'm saying here, Damian, bring, you know, let's bring the people in that have been in this community that you know, and that's engaged. Let's talk about this and let's report to council. Let's own, you know, follow up from it. That's what we've been talking about here. We haven't been flying under the radar. It's here. We have community chats in Corder Madera every other Tuesday. We talk about any topic. We're not going to shy away from it. We're going to have a public discussion and we're going to do what we need to do. We're public servants. We serve you. Whether you're here or not. The other pieces, Ava, I just lastly, I want to be careful with statistics. Statistics are important. They're a starting point. We can play with statistics all we want. What we need to do is look at statistics and start there. But really focus internally on what each jurisdiction is, is seeing. Corder Madera sees something different than Mill Valley to San and Sommo, just like the chief said. And so you need to understand Marin County, then Corder Madera. And, and again, we have the stats. We can talk about them. We can also talk about the types of investigations and complaints we've seen over the last 10 years, both positively and negatively. So we're here for that. Certainly work through our mayor and our council. They're, they're all here. They're very engaged as you can see. But we jump because you rose, you, you've provided information that we need to jump for. And so we're here and we'll engage. So, you know, thanks Chief for your, your overview and I appreciate your presentation.
I did want to add one quick, one more quick thing. I think we were the, the second police department in the county to get body worn cameras after Mill Valley and pretty early on in the nation. And I think a lot of times everyone thinks of body worn cameras and thinks of like, oh, that's great for, to see what happened during a shooting or, you know, a use of force or when someone passed away at the hands of an officer. And it is useful for that, right? But we use it, we don't have instances like that very often, if ever. And so what we use it a lot is on complaints, which is great. Or someone was, I got pulled over. I got pulled over because of this or that. And we can go to it, watch it, talk to the officer, talk to the person who got pulled over and, and work through it and really find out, was it a misunderstanding? Was it truly a bad trait by the officer? Was the person making the allegations just hearing something that didn't occur and, and work through it? And it's been a really good tool for meeting with citizens when they've had instances like that. Because before we had those, it was really like, the officer says this, the citizen says this, and we go, okay. Is there anything else we have? And it was really almost frustrating to try and figure out what really happened. And having that extra tool, it's not the end all be all, but it is helpful to see it. And I just wanted to throw that out there. That is another thing. With the addition of RIPA, that's, that's really helpful. And we do require officers to turn that on with every encounter they have with the public. So I'll end with that. Thank you.
Chief, thank you and Todd both so much. That was really helpful and informative. And I look forward to having this, you know, continuing this discussion going forward. And at this point, I'd like to invite any council members to ask any other questions or make any other comments that they may have. And yeah, Leela.
I just want to say I really appreciate the sort of spirit of honesty and a desire to, you know, figure things out and do the right thing here. You know, I think we in Marin are insulated from some of the, you know, extreme issues we've seen around the country, but you know, being part of America, we're not immune to it. And I just appreciate that, you know, I like the idea of living somewhere and I'm on the council for a place where we're, we're trying to, trying to do things right. So appreciate the things that have been said in that, in that vein tonight.
Absolutely. Any other closing comments or questions from council members? And if not, that will conclude this item. Chief, thank you so much again for your time being here for your excellent presentation and for both your and the entire police department's incredible service to our community. We appreciate it. And look forward to, like I said, continuing this discussion going forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And that brings us to item four, which is our consent calendar on tonight's agenda. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the council or public can pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion. Would any members of the council or staff members like to pull any items from our consent calendar? Yeah, Todd.
Council, I'd like to pull item 4B and move it to the next meeting. We have a little bit more work to do on this item.
Okay, sounds good. Amy, do we need a motion on, on continuing that item to a future meeting?
I guess, yeah, let's take a motion. I'm not, I think it's probably not 100% required, but I think since it's made it on the agenda, I think it, it makes sense to take a motion.
Okay, we will do all our motions after public comment. So no other, no other items to be pulled from staff or council, correct? And seeing none, I'll turn this over to members of the public. So if any members of the public would like to pull an item from our consent calendar for further discussion, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emails regarding the consent calendar?
No, there were no emails regarding the consent calendar.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up. So we'll close public comment and I would first ask for a motion to continue item 4B to a future meeting. Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, go ahead and make that motion.
Great, thank you, Bob. And Rebecca, can we vote, please?
That's member Lee.
Yes.
That's member Morgan.
Yes.
That's a member of Azia.
Yes.
That's my concise.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you. And then I would invite council members to make any comments they may have on the rest of the consent calendar. And if not, we'll have a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll go ahead.
Bob. Oh, okay, Fred. All right. And Bob seconds?
I'll second it, sure.
Okay, thank you guys.
That's member Lee.
Yes.
That's member Morgan.
Yes.
Member of Azia.
Yes.
That's my concise.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. There are no public hearings tonight, which brings us to our business items. The first business item is 6A, which is discussion and possible adoption of resolution number 22, 2021, accepting the town of Corder Madera's climate adaptation assessment. And with that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to start off. I'm going to have RJ Sukho, our Public Works Director introduce the team, but this has truly been a team effort. As you know, I think we're on month 20 plus working on this important item. I just, from my perspective, I think it's been a total team effort. And when I say team, it's the council, it's, it's our boards and commissions. It's staff and it's the community. It hasn't always been perfect, but processes are never perfect. It's just important that we step back, listen and follow, you know, work together and follow the direction we're trying to go to. And ultimately the direction with this, you know, originally called this a climate adaptation plan. And I felt like we couldn't even get out of the, the starting blocks, you know, because it really isn't a plan. It is an assessment. This really came about in 2018 when we started to see a lot of reports statewide about, you know, climate change and sea level rise and how it would impact specific jurisdictions. There were reports specific to Marin County and impacts to Corder Madera. Quite frankly, those are shocking. And I think, you know, from my, from my, my standpoint as your town manager, when I look at things, I'm more of a show me person. And so when I listen to Roy Wolfher talk or Marty Sullivan, it hits home with me because I think in kind like that, like our residents do and often, you know, speak out with us about this. But what also impacted me was some of the, the what if scenarios of, well, what if that were to happen 50 years from now? How would that impact us? How would it impact our shoreline with our residential areas? How would that impact us for Highway 101? Cutting us off from the county or, or more specifically, our key revenue stream, our two shopping centers? What would that do to us? And I wanted to know. And I, and I wanted to do something as, as, as the legacy of staff and council right now for future leaders to give them tools in their toolbox, should something happen, they have that analysis of, of the tools in their toolbox. And think about when you, when you talk about a climate adaptation assessment, you know, these aren't like, oh, great, this is happening. We're going to do this and we solve the problem next fiscal year. These are 10 year conversations, like, right? It's, these are processes. And so that's really what I wanted to do. We had a conversation with council early on. We were able to get a grant to support some of the funding because again, at the state level and Caltrans, they wanted to protect the highway as well. And so we started the process and 18 months into it, we thought we were doing a good job communicating. We thought we were on the right track. We thought we had good engagement, but we didn't. We fell short and we had, you know, a key part of our residential community that was impacted on this discussion. You know, on the east side of Corder Madera. And so, you know, we step back, we, there was a petition that was pretty extensive and there's a lot of public comment about it. RJ and the team can speak to it. And we did, we had to stop. We had to listen to it and we had a community engagement conversation about it. And we needed to pivot. We need to step back and think about this. And so what staff did is we made a series of amendments and, and some of it we kept and some changes we, we made and some of the key changes at that time was we took out a lot of the section three and some of the shoreline discussion specific to two neighborhoods to really engage, re-engage that community as we move forward, if they want to, if, if, if such engagement is requested. And to kind of go through this process again, possibly with a different team to be thoughtful on, on any amendments that we should make to the assessment. The key pieces that were left in were, you know, specific to a lot of our fire risk on the, you know, with, with climate change to our, our high risk fire areas. And also we left in some of our options to protect our commercial businesses, right? That, that's, that's in this report. We kept it in there. We made those revisions and we put it out, back out to the public for 10 to 14 days of comment. And we received, I think approximately 27, you know, public comments, 27 to 30 public comments. And what we did as a staff, we've re-engaged people that took the time to comment on it, to take the time to read this report, which is pretty extensive, as you can see, to re-engage them to, as a staff, to first meet, to take in their comments and say, okay, did we miss anything? Do we need to make any changes? And we made a series of changes. One of them was, let's change this from a plan to an assessment, because that's really what we're describing to the community. We're saying we're doing a what if scenario. We're not saying it's going to happen. But what if these, this, this assessment back in 2018, what if it happens? What if it happens to Corder Madera? What are our options? And that's really what we're talking about. And so we changed it to an assessment. We've re-engaged the commenters. We made a few other changes. We're going to go over those tonight with you. We went over with them a few weeks ago and we walked through it. And then we re-engaged and from it, I think we had a thoughtful conversation. I, you know, there's still obviously concerns and some of them may be on the call. But I think as a staff, we've worked the best we can to, to hear our community and to, to meet any concerns, but to really do the work of protecting the town. We think we're here now. We want to present that to you. One change that we did make, and it was brought up in our, our previous meeting, you know, and I'm fine with it. I think we've been asking or preparing to ask the council to approve this plan. We're not, we don't need you to approve this plan. You know, as a matter of fact, I think we're going to have two, two changes to it, two amendments to it over the next 18 months. Some of the undergrounding, when that undergrounding conversation's done. And obviously potentially with the shoreline discussion in the residential neighborhoods. And so we're going to come back to you with a series of changes. This is a living document. It's meant to be a living what if document. It's going to change as we go. And that's what it's meant to do. So we're asking you tonight, not to approve it, but to accept it. To accept the work and, and let's keep doing the work that we need to do. And that's the, with the what if scenarios. And lastly, I think there was a public comment at the start of the meeting by Roy. And I think for me, again, I, I mentioned Roy and Marta at the top, because for me through this process, they impacted me the most as residents. They were thoughtful. They took the time to really, for me to understand where they're coming from. And so, you know, I appreciate that. And to Rory, I just want you to know that we do this, I call it the Martin, the Monte Carlo, you know, scenario. And so we do the same thing with everything we do, the what ifs. We've done the same thing financially. And so what we did is our Monte Carlo scenario was to take the worst economic downturn in the last 40 years and double it. What does that look like? And then triple it. What does that look like for, for us? And when you think about, step back and think about the way we're positioned now, we're positioned in the way we are now financially because of that. And so we do exactly that. It's what ifs, because that's, because the what if, what if we make a mistake and fall short in the 10 years, it takes 10 years to solve that. Well, we just shame on us for the future residents and leaders of this community if we fall short. So I feel strongly that this product in front of you, there's still work to be done. It's a good foundation. It's meant to be a what if scenario assessments based on data statewide in 2018. We all agree with what's been said, and I think Roy's done a good job of it. At some point, we will have to go through the planning process moving forward to say, at what point do we look at science? What type of scientific data do we look at specific to Corder Madera? And at what time, like were you real time where you can see things? And when it hits a certain point, then we all agree, we see a real time. It's, we all agree on it. It's part of our plan or assessment. And then we know what the, what the options are for us. And so we all hear you loud and clear. This is not the time for it. This is to take what if scenarios. We're asking you to accept it, not approve it. And again, I'm just proud of the work of the community and staff. You know, it's been emotional at times for everybody. But this is hard stuff. And if it was easy, people would have done this 20 years ago. We're one of the first entities in the state of California to do the work. And I'm proud of the work and the team. And so I think you have them on here, Sasha, Jeremy, RJ and Adam. And they're going to walk you through again, a quick PowerPoint of the changes that we made and where we're at. And again, we're asking you at this point to take public comment and consider accepting this document. All right, Joe?
Thank you very much, Todd. So we're going to share a couple of slides here. Sasha, if you could start the slideshow. So as Todd mentioned, we've made updates, the title in light of comments. We've changed it to climate adaptation assessment.
Hey RJ, I don't know if it's just me, but you're coming through super faint. Is that just me, you guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
How's that?
Better, thank you.
Okay. So yes, we've, in light of comments, we've updated the title, the climate adaptation assessment. We think this more accurately reflects, you know, the spirit of the document. Next slide, please. And before we go into kind of the overall process that has occurred since, you know, roughly December 2018, wanted to give some credits to those that, in addition to our, you know, very valued community members, you know, these folks really spent a lot of time contributing to this, this document and process. We have a lot of agency representatives. We have our council. We have our flood control board. We have, you know, our town staff. We have our consultants consisting of Adaptation International, San Francisco Esri Institute and others, as well as we had over 20 agency representatives from various environmental stakeholder groups, neighboring towns and cities and others that met regularly as part of this resilience advisory committee. Next slide, please. So quickly, just want to touch on kind of the, the two main aspects of climate resilience. You know, we're here today talking about climate adaptation, which is adapting to the risks of climate change, but also there's another side of it. There's mitigation, which is reducing the cause of climate change. So just want to build that foundation as we move this forward. Next slide, please. Excellent. And kind of taking a step back and looking at kind of where we are, you know, this was a, a planning level document really to look at, you know, as Todd had mentioned, that what if scenario. So taking this guidance material from the state and others and applying it and seeing what it might look like. So we're in this, you know, this is, this is a graphic used by the state, state of California adaptation planning guide. And we're really at this phase three where, you know, we've set these possible strategies, but we're not yet implementing. And even once we get into a possible project or an implementation, that's where a lot of the, the detailed work will occur and adjustments will need to be made and possibly, you know, maybe you know, projects might not even move forward, you know, whatever the case may be, but there's plenty more analysis, plenty more community involvement as part of any of these kind of possible actions or projects that are identified in this document. Next step, please. So going back, this initiated with starting a contract with Adaptation International based on a grant that we received through Caltrans. You know, it's, it's going on, you know, two and a half years and it's been, you know, a lot of valuable work and a lot of healthy discussions. And we think it shaped the way we've crafted the document today. And we think it's been very valuable. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And here's just kind of a look at some of the, the earlier workshops, you know, that were held in two thousand and nineteen. You know, these were further refined and, and, you know, with each workshop, you know, we always came back to this resilience advisory committee, which consisted of those kind of specialists in their, their various fields, you know, local jurisdictions, school districts, environmental stakeholder groups and those things to kind of fact-check, you know, you know, how we were developing this information and the feedback we're receiving. Additional workshops continued on. You know, we did have the pandemic, so many of them shifted to Zoom. There were various surveys and other interactive opportunities. Meanwhile, throughout, you know, we were communicating regularly via Nextdoor or Town Newsletter, our project webpage. We did also send out annual flood flyers that did reference this overall effort. Next slide, please. So back in November of two thousand and twenty, we first publicized the draft climate adaptation plan at the time. And that was at the conclusion of our last public workshop. We came back to you, council, in December to report on that draft climate habit adaptation plan. And around that time, there was also an article on the Marin IJ, which I think brought a lot of this effort to folks that may have not seen that in the past. And that kind of triggered a, a big response from a group of community members that we hadn't heard from to date. So we then, you know, listened to that, made adjustments, expanded the overall process based on those requests. We rolled out, you know, at least three additional workshops. We expanded to have an additional public comment periods. We really spent a lot of time over the last seven months, looking at each and every comment that was received and adjusting the document accordingly. So again, in March, you know, we had reissued a, a version two point O. And then again, the one that's before you, we're calling version three point O, which has a revised title and some additional data tables and also addresses the, the various comments from the prior comment periods. And with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Sasha with Adaptation International to go through kind of some of those comments we, we heard at the various stages in more detail and how we adjusted the document. So take it away, Sasha.
Great. Thank you, RJ. Thank you, Mayor Beckman and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to both collaborate with the town and our partners on this project over the course of the last couple of years and then also be here to share this milestone in the development of the adaptation assessment. I'm gonna just re, my goal tonight is to just reiterate a couple of the things that RJ said, but then provide a little bit more context and some Jeremy from the San Francisco Estuary Institute, and I will talk about some of the specific, you know, substantive changes since the plan was brought to the council at the end of last year. So you can see kind of a summary of those three working versions, the initial draft plan from November that RJ mentioned. And he summarized, you know, what into creating, what went into creating that draft plan. Then the updates, which came out in March of this year, the review period. And then finally, the adaptation assessment, which you're reviewing now. So a summary of some of the key themes that we heard from the first comment, public comment period from November through the beginning of February of this year. That included a petition that was submitted by Martin Roger Sullivan. It was signed by six hundred and fifty-five individuals. It's available on the project webpage under the phases of the project. Some of the key themes from that petition, as well as other comments that were received through the website and through email during that phase of the project development, where that there were limited engagement opportunities and not enough outreach conducted to encourage community participation in the development of the assessment. There was too much discussion of potential adaptation actions for particularly Marina Village and Mariner Cove. There needed to be enhanced consideration of nature-based solutions as alternatives to hard solutions. And a request for an extension in the final process to allow for additional community feedback, which RJ has already mentioned, was responded to. There were other comments beyond that petition. Some of those key themes were a limited discussion of the potential benefits of undergrounding electrical utilities in hillside neighborhoods and how that could reduce the risk of wildfire for those neighborhood. And a lack of clarity surrounding the intended purpose of the document and its designed use by the town. So in response to that first round of comments, town staff and the project team works collaboratively, as already mentioned, to host three additional public workshops. There were significant revisions to the document, including the creation of an executive summary, modifications to the introduction, significant reworking of the shoreline section that town manager Kusamano mentioned, and updates to the hillside section. So for example, in the shoreline section, all of the potential adaptation actions that were included have been removed from Marina Village and the Mariner Cove sections of the plan. Particular action such as a real estate disclosure action was also removed from the plan. And then it took some time to modify the scope and deliverables as part of the Caltrans adaptation planning grant. The second draft of the assessment was released in March and the summary of some of those com, the key comments and themes from the second comment period include that the length of the document, it was too long and overly provided an overly negative perception of climate change impacts. There were comments that there was limited, unclear or lack of scientific references for the use of sea level rise projections that were cited through the California State Sealable Rise Guidance and reflected in the document. And that there was continued mention of levies or managed retreat in the document. And finally, that the language used around the undergrounding section sounded biased towards the decision before the study had been conducted. So again, town staff worked with the project team to do a review of citation, figure captions and graphics used throughout the assessment. The sea level rise science section was further updated and we'll speak to that in a minute. Include more resources and links directly to the science and the state guidance. The undergrounding discussion was reviewed and the language adjusted. And as has been mentioned, the plan, the title was changed to an adaptation assessment. So just a quick snapshot in, that you've seen in the council packet, but wanna talk about here with the community listening, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeremy Lowe with SFEI to talk about some of the shoreline updates in particular.
Thank you, Sasha. Go over the next slide. Yeah, so there's been considerable changes made to the shoreline section, as Sasha mentioned. Firstly, to address the scientific basis for the projections. And this slide reflects some of those changes. It's based upon the state guidance, which is provided by the state for use by public agencies, cities and, and counties. It is being regularly updated, starting in twenty ten, there's a release in twenty thirteen and now more recently in twenty eighteen, which reflects the most recent international, national and local scientific information. Scripps Institution of Oceanography is responsible for providing the science and then the Ocean Protection Council provides the guidance and the interpretation of that science. When you get down to Corder Madera, there are obviously differences depending upon the elevation, how the elevation of the ground changes. And so looking ahead, this guidance is really important and maintaining and keeping it updated is important, but also local observations into the future. And also may, understanding the, how the ground changes is also going to be important. Because all these projections will have uncertainty looking forward. Uncertainty in the amount of emissions that we have from the, in, in greenhouse gases, but also an uncertainty in how the processes work. And so the table on the right is from the guidance and has a number of different emission scenarios and it also has a number of different probabilities of certain elevations being reached. And so looking forward, we're using this to, depending upon the type of project you're doing and how the work is changing, that'll, that'll affect how you change the interpretation of the sea level rise. Next slide, please. And the other changes that has been made has been reflecting the, looking at what types of shoreline adaptation planning options there are available. And here, the, what has been laid out is all the different options that might be available. No action, accommodation, protection, retreat. No single character category is actually better or best. It's gonna depend upon the location. It's gonna be taken on the circumstances. And also it's gonna be depending on the timing of what resources are available and what the community goals are and needs are. So this is now a new reflection, rather than specifying what to do, is specifying, these are the things you can do. And now Sasha's gonna let us know how that is, is gonna be used moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Jeremy. Them, I think it's important to reflect that they actually, in the adaptation assessment now, there are these two blank pages to really highlight the idea that there aren't specific actions selected by the town with the community for implementation in these areas. And that really it is gonna be up to the town staff, town leadership and the community to work together, particularly in Marina Village and Mariner Cove neighborhoods, as well as with regional partners, state agencies, to determine how best to respond to the challenges of climate change. The community members' voices, which have been loud and clear over the last few months, the project are essential to working through a multi-step process with the town staff and the town leadership to determine how to achieve the goals for the community and how best to respond to these changes and build resilience over time. On the hillside section, I'm gonna just highlight those undergrounding changes. Most of that text that was changed is in this two-pager describing the potential benefits and limitations of undergrounding. Some work in the end of last year and the beginning of this year, is this year, conversations with PG&E as well as Central Marin Fire collaborated to refine the text here to better discuss the potential risk reduction benefits of undergrounding as well as potential costs and implications. And then in the action, potential action section, there are two actions that the town could consider in the future. And the text around feasibility study to better understand those costs and benefits for the hillside neighborhoods, as well as the potential for, based on the outcomes of that study, sending a formal request to PG&E to underground utilities have been included in the plan. I'm gonna turn it back to RJ, but we'll reflect one more thing that I heard early in this conversation is that adaptation planning really is a process. It's not the outcome of a single project. And so this roadmap to resilience does help move the town forward in that process. RJ?
Yeah, thank you very much, Sasha. And really, we're at the end of the formal presentation, but we do wanna open it up for any questions or answers from council or the public.
Great. Thank you very much, RJ and, and the entire team. If you guys would not mind unsharing your screen, that way I can see all of our council members at once here, so I can see if we've got hands up. Great, thank you. So if we have any questions from the council member for our staff and the consultant team, please go ahead and raise your hand. Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, this is more around process, but Todd, you mentioned that potentially there's changes within the eight, next eighteen months or so. When those changes occur, what's the, I guess, what's the process for changing the document? What's the public engagement? That's kind of part one. And then part two, along the same lines, if all of a sudden we have a funding opportunity and there's an action item that we can pull out and execute that on, same thing, what is the process? And what's the public engagement piece of that?
I think that it, it depends on the situation. So most items, you know, are longer term. Some are shorter terms. So in relation to like the undergrounding conversation, that, that's already identified, you know, in this document. And so once we have, you know, that report analysis and the letter to PG&E and we complete all of our follow-up, I think that's as simple as, as coming back to the council with our core resident team that's, that I'm working with to report out to council and ask to amend the document, you know, make sure we get our work in the document. I think that's an easy kind of step from a process standpoint. The shoreline conversation is, you know, as we go back through this process, if we do that, you know, that's again, we're talking about a pretty robust, you know, community engagement with those neighborhoods to really, you know, talk that out. And so that's gonna be a pretty extensive process, possibly something similar to what, you know, got us here to this day. I mean, it could take this long, so I, I just don't know. But when that work is complete, if it happens, that would come to council then for, again, to accept the document. Because again, I don't, I don't think I differentiate between accepting and adopting at this point. I, I, I think we're gonna continue as we move forward over the few, next few years to make adjustments. So I think it's situational. There are other items, you know, and there, and RJ can speak to it if you want about timing. I mean, some are just easier to move forward than others, but a lot of these, you know, are substantial kind of projects. They take time. So they would be something we would discuss in a work plan. If we wanted to widen a specific road, we're talking about a potential undergrounding project right now at the base of Christmas Tree Hill. And so those would be discussions we would bring to the council. Hey, this is actually, you know, item eighty-seven in our assessment. To, we have an opportunity here to underground this area. We wanna move forward or we have an opportunity to widen a roadway per, you know, item ninety of this project, the assessment, we wanna move forward with it. So those are ones that could come to you pretty quickly. But some of the others involve environmental and pretty large processes that would actually go through the planning department and planning commission before you would hear it. And you're talking multi-year.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll add to that. So an example of something that, you know, we might bring back for possible discussion is we have some funding that's already been received through Transportation Authority Marin to do multimodal improvements on Paradise Drive, kind of near the private schools of our, by Marin Montessori that has kind of been deferred on, given this climate adaptation assessment. We do have an opportunity to repurpose or re-scope that product to also include some of these climate change considerations. I think one way or another, we probably need to move that product forward, either for a multimodal project or a multimodal plus. You know, climate change consideration project, or we'll have to work with TAM to repurpose the funds, which I'm not sure exactly how that would go, but that's, that's one that we probably need to decide on here relatively soon, if we wanna move that forward. And then if that process does go forward, it's blank canvas, it's community input, it's what are the goals? What are we trying to achieve? And really starting from scratch, but looking strictly at that, you know, project limits and, and kind of starting the conversation anew.
And then one other question also, and it may be more down the road. But has there been any consideration or any thought to having a formal, I'll say, climate change commission? Because right now, we, I know we have the climate change committee, which I think is, it's temporary, it's ad hoc. We have a flood control board. It just seems that we haven't, we have a climate action point, you know, plan. We're gonna hopefully adopt this tonight, or I'm sorry, accept this tonight. And it just seems like the next step in that process is another piece of the puzzle, which is actually have a formal climate change commission.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if we call it that or not, but I, you know, I know that we have a, we have the climate, you know, subcommittee that we, we formed and, you know, something that we're just struggling to staff it, quite frankly. And does it make sense to your point? And I know we've been talking to the mayor about this, to combine multiple commissions to really, what are we trying to do moving forward as we pass our, you know, climate action plan and our climate adaptation assessment? As we look at infrastructure projects, is there opportunities to combine one? And I think staff, we're gonna talk about that as a team and bring something to the council to consider potentially, because we don't have the bandwidth to, to handle all these committees, especially with our, our decision-making matrix. So we're gonna have this conversation at the September council retreat. As we talk about the work plan and really, what do we wanna accomplish? How do we want our decision-making matrix? And what makes the most sense for us moving forward? So I think that you hit a good point, Mr. Vice Mayor. I think there's something to that. I just don't know exactly what it looks like yet. I don't know that staff does. We have, but we're gonna work on it and we'll bring something to you in September.
Okay, so it sounds like more to come.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great, thanks, Fred. Any other questions from council members for staff and the team here? And if not, we can go ahead and open this up to members of the public for public comment. So if you would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And we're gonna start with Roy.
Good evening again. Just a couple of items. One of the things that really kills me is the irony of seeing something printed on the page. One of the things that really kills me is the irony of seeing something printed on the page saying, this page was left intentionally blank. You know, when I look at it, it's a blank, but anyway, has nothing to do with climate change. Appreciate the direction that the, that the whole program is going, the adaptation assessment. I would appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, if you would revise your, your letter in that document and remove the subjective, and I said, use the word earlier, FUD, fear, uncertainty, doubt. Things like worse flooding, because we know in the areas that we live in, that are on Bay Mud, on landfill, the, the primary cause is settlement. Yes, the waters are lapping at our streets and sometimes at our garage doors. But, you know, using our dire, you know, markedly dire, monumental challenges, climate emergency. What we need to put into this program is taking a look and adapting and making sure we're doing it to economic and market forces related to climate change. Humans over their entire span of existence have adapted. We can adapt, but we don't have to panic. We can do this in a very step-by-step fashion. So I would ask that those few changes be made. And I, I will send an email out that recommend two books that all the council members and the staff members should read. It is very enlightening. These two, two, two documents, you can buy them as an electronic book, very inexpensive, eight to nine dollars apiece. I think it's worthwhile education to read those books. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. I'll follow up with you offline. Not seeing any other hands up at the moment. Rebecca, did we get any email public comment?
No Mayor Beckman, we did not receive any emails, comments.
Okay, and we've got a hand up now from Pat, so we will go to her.
Hi there, I just need to say something that I think needs to be said that nobody else is saying. I think it's a real shame that our community has decided to walk away from the science over on the Bayside because of what I think are very well-intended but misinformed climate skeptics or climate deniers. I think that the materials they're reading are disseminated by the fossil fuel industry and its supporters. And I think that we need to face the problem. I think wishful thinking will not make it go away. If the seawall wasn't the right idea, maybe there are other ideas. There are floating breakwaters out there now that only go up when you need them. And there's also the possibility of floating homes. So there's other ideas, but as long as the community is denying the problem under the leadership of certain individuals, we're not going to get any closer to addressing it if we, if we are continuing to deny it. So I hope there'll be some new leadership over on the Bayside that will step up and say, let's take on this problem. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Pat. And there are no other hands up at the moment. I'll just make a last call here. If any other members of the public would like to comment. And I'm not seeing any, so we will close public comment and bring this item back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to start us off with? And if not, I'm happy to just start off. I just want to thank, you know, this was a huge effort to get us to this point. And I think obviously there's, there's work left to be done, but I think this is, this is, you know, a big step forward for Cordamadera. I think we've really got our foot in the door now in a very serious way when it comes to beginning to lay out a credible plan for how we're going to protect our town from flooding and wildfire in the coming decades. So I think that's huge. You know, huge congratulations to, to the entire project team on this and especially thankful to all the residents who got involved. I think, you know, we, we certainly learned some lessons, I think, when it comes to public outreach on this. And I think there was a lot of kind of mistrust earlier on in the process and it was very difficult to move past that. And the only way that we were able to actually move past that and really see eye to eye and start working together was to engage each other in good faith openly. And I, and I think it was, you know, it was great to see that happen. I think we're in a place now where we're really able to start, you know, continue to carry this, this effort forward. You know, I live in Mariner Cove, so I'm acutely aware of the fact that my house and the hundreds of homes surrounding it are built on Bay Mud that is settling, continues to settle and are surrounded by a bay that continues to rise. And I think, you know, I join most or all of my neighbors in wanting to make sure that, that our family can safeguard our home, which I think like many families in Mariner Cove is, is really our sole asset of value. So it's everything to us. And I think, you know, that's why we're doing this, right? That's why we're protecting homes in the hillsides. That's why we're, we're working on protecting our shopping centers. And that's why we're going to work, you know, through a renewed community engagement on protecting Bayside homes. So I'm, you know, I feel like this is a fantastic step forward. It was a huge effort. You know, a lot of work went into this and I'm just so grateful to, to everybody, both at, at staff and in the community who were a part of carrying this forward. And with that, anybody else want to make any comments? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, I too, I appreciate, I think the public, I think our residents really stepped up on this. And I think staff did as well. It seems like it was a collaboration and I appreciate the, the public outreach that staff did and also the changes that were made. I know the first draft where it said plan, when I see the word plan, I'm thinking it's a plan, there's action items and they're going to get implemented. And I'm glad that with the consultants also that it was changed to an assessment, because I think it is an assessment. I think it gives us tools that we can pull out. Like Todd mentioned, sometimes these, some of these may be longer term. Sometimes RJ may have the opportunity on a short-term basis to pull some of these out and use them. But I just think it's better off calling it assessment. Two other things, one thing is I look forward to, I want to say September, about seeing how we can create an efficiency with the flood board, the current climate change committee, how we can streamline that process. Because I just think it's, it's another key piece, again, to the whole climate change puzzle that we're putting together. And one other thing I'd like to see is, I'd like to see Lisa's document reviewed at least on an annual basis. I just wouldn't want us to go through all this and just kind of put it on a shelf. And then 18 months or two years from now going, oh, you know, we pull it down again. I like to see on a minimum, again, annual basis, even if there's no changes. I think it'll keep it fresh in people's minds what's out there. But I can support the adopting the assessment. Thanks.
Yeah, and Fred, to your point, it's like, you know, this is so based on scientific projections and those scientific projections are always being changed and updated, you know, because they're, they're projections. So they're inherently, you know, uncertain and we're constantly learning and refining. So I think that's a great point. Thanks for bringing that up. Any other comments from council members? And if there are none, we would entertain a motion on resolution number 222021. Yeah, Fred?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Great, thank you Leela and Rebecca. Could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Bongin?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you very much. And one last thanks and congratulations to the project team and to all the residents who had a hand in shaping this. We really appreciate it. And that is going to bring us to item 6B, which is consideration and possible approval of Parks and Recreation Commission requests for a budget amendment with regards to purchasing outdoor furniture for the Town Park Plaza. Ashley, whenever you're ready.
I actually wasn't prepared to introduce the topic, but.
No, I was just going to, I was just moving Louise over as panelist.
I see you're a trooper making it, hanging in there.
I'm here.
I'm moving Louise Brown from the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Oh, perfect.
Panelist side, she actually prepared the bulk of the staff report that is before you this evening. I just formatted it and filled in some, some blanks and hyperlinks, some, some historical meetings for you all to review as background material.
Well, thank you Louise and Ashley, sorry to put you on the spot.
Louise and her team of, of subcommittee members for the Town Park Master Plan Subcommittee actually presented this item to the Parks and Recreation Commission at their April meeting and received some feedback and direction from the commission and support to bring this item forward to the council. We recognize that we are in embarking on a Town Park master planning process. And one of the things Louise will explain is why this piece of that process is being handled separately because of the commission's feel that there's a need for a facility like this in the community right now, given the COVID restrictions, increase in outdoor activities, increase in outdoor dining, just to create a more of an outdoor community center gathering space for the public. And one of the directions from the Parks and Recreation Commission, when they supported the project and the concept to bring this item back to the council was that the subcommittee, Louise herself, was to solicit several bids, not necessarily formal bids, but options for achieving the, the design goals in various places. So that's what you have before you this evening and Commissioner Brown will explain that to you in greater detail.
Great, thank you for that and thank you for making this time on the agenda for us to bring this item forward to you. I'd like to share my screen. Hopefully you can all see this. And this is the second time that we've come to you to talk about Town Park Plaza Phase Three updates. And when we started this process, it was deep in the midst of COVID. And we were looking for opportunities to create safe gathering spaces for our community to come together, particularly for outdoor dining and to support local businesses. And Town Park Plaza with its trellis and open space really presented an opportunity for us to create comfortable, flexible seating and covered eating areas for people so they could continue to enjoy patronizing local restaurants, but have safe places to eat outdoors. So one of the first things that we did was to come forward to you and talk about whether I seen the plaza. And thank you very much to the town and to a generous contribution from the Cordamadera Community Foundation. We've recently installed both awnings and roller shades at the trellis at Town Park Plaza. And these are retractable, but they give a real opportunity to provide protection from primarily the sun and wind, but also other elements. And these have been really graciously received by the community and the local businesses and are in use every single day. I see people closing the shades, pulling the awnings across and finding a respite from the sun. We would like to finish out this phase three by optimizing the furniture that exists at Town Park Plaza to again, create as many opportunities for people to enjoy that space as possible. Currently, there are six concrete tables under the trellis that you can see. Those were contributed by community donations and the Cordamadera Community Foundation back when the trellis was originally put in place. The wonderful thing about getting new furniture for the plaza is that these tables would provide an opportunity for us to have seating in other places within Town Park that are desperately in need of seating. One of those is under the sale at the park playground where there is no real seating for families to come together and children to sit down and have a meal. So we've worked with the Cordamadera Community Foundation and they are amenable to us moving several of these tables into the park playground area. When we look at furniture and when we've been talking about how to optimize this space, it really is with five key goals in mind. The first one is capacity. As much as possible, we want to create more seating for the community, more opportunities for people to come down, whether they're going to enjoy a meal, a drink, purchase from a local restaurant, or if they're going to bring their own picnic or gather together at any other time of the day. We want to have as many opportunities for people to sit as possible. So we're looking to optimize capacity. We're looking for furniture that's going to be durable, that will last for a long time. We want it to be comfortable, certainly, so that people will come and stay a while. We're looking for flexibility and seating options so that small and large groups can come together and the seating can be moved around as needed to accommodate larger groups, events, et cetera. And finally aesthetics. So we looked for furniture solutions where we could buy a suite of furniture with large and small tables that would all match so that everything looks very appealing. And there's a magnetism to coming down to the plaza to, to sit and enjoy this space, because it really is an outdoor community center. We worked with the original landscape architect who did the design for the plaza to help us scale out the kinds of seating that we would need. And this is just, as you can see, a very rough sketch, but it did give us an opportunity to size the number of small and large tables. Those are long, more farm-style tables with benches and then square tables with four chairs each. And you can see how they exist both underneath the plaza trellis, as well as other places within the plaza, including the space that is currently used by Cafe Verde for their serving. But all of these tables would be movable and the benches that go with the farm tables again, could be moved around to accommodate different types of seating arrangements as needed. We did look at three different furniture options in order to get competitive bids. The first two are from Crate and Barrel. This one is aluminum, it's powder coated for durability and it's got a faux, faux wicker seating for the benches and chairs. The second one is all powder coated aluminum with optional cushions. Those would be gray if we chose to go forward with this option. And the third one is from Restoration Hardware, our local retailer here. This is also powder coated aluminum with a mesh chair. We are really looking for the council to provide us with some feedback. The Park and Rec Commission was very supportive of moving forward with furniture purchase to finish out this phase of Town Park Plaza. There are other upgrades to Town Park Plaza that we would like to consider as part of the master planning process, which Rebecca mentioned. But before we get the community feedback that we are currently striving to, to collect through the community survey, which was mailed out and you should all be receiving in your envelope or mailboxes this week, we don't want to commit to any further upgrades to the plaza, because we want to look at it in the context of all of the other things that we could do to enhance infrastructure programs and facilities for Park and Rec going forward. I think that would be the end of what I would like to share in terms of visuals and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much Louise. We will start with questions from council members. So if any council members have any questions for staff on this, please go ahead and we'll start with Charles.
Yeah, so, you know, I have done quite a lot of very large furniture packages for public institutions. And one of the things that I didn't see in the report that would help me understand which, which package to go with outside of aesthetics is also if you had reviewed the warranty repair and replacement program with those companies and how maybe those would stack up. Because I think aesthetically, they're all very similar, but, you know, most of the furniture I spec is for the airports of the world and they get huge use, or I've done food courts. And ultimately their finishes deteriorate quickly because of use, not because of neglect even, just long-term. So there's this balance of really nice stuff that could last, but you can maintain versus, you know, affordable, but it's throwaway in two or three years, right? So did you have considerations of that in the subgroup or have you looked at that?
We did look at other options that I would say would fall into the category of the throwaway, because it didn't have the same level of quality for the coated finish. I don't have specific numbers that I can share with you right now, but I'm happy to provide them to the council with it, with it regards to their warranties.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, the detailing, you know, I have CB2, which is Crate and Barrel for my own and I buy it off Craigslist. So, you know, I think it's great. I don't have Restoration Hardware, but I think, you know, that would really beautify. And their detailing and it, you know, how sturdy that is and how long it'll hold up will be much greater. So, and then also I wanted to bring up and have other council members consider is, you know, the seating itself. So that seagrass, whether it's faux or whatever, you know, tends to, a couple of those things stray off and it starts looking deteriorated. Cushions are nice because you can replace them every couple of years and kind of give an updated look. And then the mesh really holds up well, but in the long-term, it starts to deteriorate and break also, depending on what kind of mesh it is and how many rubs it gets. So those kind of things would help. So the other thing is, is, you know, if I want to ask staff about whether this, the large, you know, there's three different sums for competitive bidding, but then also within that, the Parks and Rec budget and which ones on budget or over budget, are they all acceptable? And, you know, something else I didn't really hear. And it's great that you're moving the concrete benches. I think that that's a really nice benefit as a cost benefit to another part of the park. So I don't think it's fully just, you know. fully just, you know, spending new money, but moving it and advancing and growing our overall offering. And then the other question I also had, as you said, community events, ultimately, will we make this available for rentals or parties? I think that, you know, in the same way we have the other part for special events and ways to generate revenue to keep these kind of instant, you know, additions going. That's, I think, three, three questions.
Would you like me to address some of those questions?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so first on the durability and the maintenance issues, because I know that that's a concern and certainly no matter what, I mean, we want to make sure that we're taking good care of of these purchases for the long haul. We have spoken with Cafe Verde there. As you can understand, would be very eager to see this kind of upgrade to the plaza because of the the halo effect it would have on their business. And they are willing to take in cushions and stack chairs and be responsible for that kind of care of the furniture to ensure that we get the longest life possible out of whatever our purchase is. I think I'm going to ask Ashley to address the question around renting the space because there there is a current policy with that.
Right now, we are not considering that a space that we would want to make open for private rentals. It's really important to that area to keep it a public space that anybody can utilize. And it's something that we've been striving to try to increase the awareness to the community that this is a public space, not just a Cafe Verde location.
And I'll build on that by saying to really underscore that idea that this is for the whole community. It's not just for people who are patronizing Cafe Verde. We want to, once this is in place, start a series of communications to the community to encourage people to come down and use the plaza. And maybe we do things as things start to open up where we suggest that people come down on Thursdays with their picnic and we have Thursday night at Community Plaza. There could be opportunities in the future to have music there. So while it's not a private rental, there's still opportunities to have events with the whole community invited.
Great, thank you guys. And thanks, Charles. Good questions. Any other questions from council members? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, because I know you guys are working on the master plan. It seems like this is a one off. So why, I want to say urgency to get this done, when again, there's a master plan in place.
Yeah, so this was started specifically to address the COVID era. And at that time, we actually had several other upgrades to the plaza that we were considering again, to make it comfortable, flexible, and increase capacity and enable the community to come down and use the space as much as possible. We pulled back on any further enhancements besides the weatherization, which we've done, and these furniture upgrades, which we would like to do, which are intended to complete this as an appealing plaza phase to ensure that we've kind of gotten through this most immediate opportunity. And I guess I would say we could wait until the master planning process is done, but this is still going to be a priority to not leave this half completed. We feel that it's half done at this point.
Okay. And so until the mask, until the master plan is done after this, we won't see any more one offs like this. Because I think the whole purpose of the master plan was to master plan it, prioritize it, so we're not doing these things piecemeal.
That's right.
Okay.
Everything into the master planning process from here forward.
Okay. And then the other thing in here, which it says, there's something about security costs, but they're unknown. It's kind of hard, at least for me, to approve something when we're only seeing one piece of it, because theoretically, we could sit here tonight or have you guys come back with more information that we're approving X amount of dollars for furniture. And then we find out that security is going to cost, you know, I'm making the number up like $10,000, which is another chunk of money. And this is talking about security cameras. I didn't know who's going to monitor those cameras if they're on 24/7, how that's going to work.
So we would like to work with Public Works on what the right solution is for security. I envision that it's a combination of cables and and motion activated lighting so that there's an opportunity to to really shine a spotlight quite literally on anything happening at the plaza after hours. Having understood that there's been an increased level of vandalism in the town of late, we are thinking that we may need to also consider cameras. And I don't have the detail on it. We didn't want to miss the opportunity to bring this forward to council. But if the direction is we need to be fully fully tied up and have all of those prices, then I'm going to need to come back to you.
Okay, thank, yeah, I just don't, again, it's just me because I'm a numbers person. Sometimes, you know, all of a sudden you have one thing here, then you get the surprise down the road. And it's like, well, we'd known that to begin with. The other question I have also, which is more for Todd, or I think Michael's on the phone also. What is the alcohol, the policy on alcohol in, I want to say Town Park? And then I assume that plaza is town owned property, at least the cafe, how does that work as part of it, at least to Cafe Verde? The other one is town owned. How does that work with respect to alcohol?
We have to work through, I mean, right, alcohol is restricted in Town Park, except when you have an ABC license for certain events. And so we would have to, we'd have to look at that. And some of their requirements are are similar to what Cafe Verde did, right? You have to have a barrier. You have to have a separation. So we would have to, we would have to look at that, you know, and ultimately apply with ABC for that recommendation. The other thing that you're talking about, you know, this is a mixed one. So one thing I just really appreciate with Louise and the work of the team. You know, when COVID hit, we were talking about the $100,000 to to support businesses in the community. Because at the time when we had this conversation, we were panicked. We were like, where are we going with COVID? You know, we're going backwards and potentially we're going to be back to curbside pickup. And we wanted a place to support our businesses, help them with gift cards, but also find a place where people could meet at different locations in town using this plaza as one of the opportunities. And so we engaged the Corder Medera Community Foundation with Lisa and she did the work and she had this great vision and it was a bigger project, right? It was probably 100,000 plus project. What we did is we narrowed it down to the awning, which was immediate. We did that. It's a good one. It's it's perfect for our community. Now the question of furniture, this is one that, you know, I really appreciate all the work of Louise. It's a tough one because honestly, at this moment in time, I have a hard time like a staff. I don't have, I'll just say that it's not the world according to Todd, and I appreciate this. I don't have the vision to ever come to you and ask you to consider three bids like this with furniture. It's not in my DNA. It's not something I'm about. And so when we have this conversation with the team, it was like, hey, let's, there's a process. We're doing the master planning process, but we also still have this exigency at the time. Work through the planet, work through the Park and Rec Commission, which they did. And the commission, you know, ultimately wanted this move to the council for consideration. And so here we are. And that's why it's being presented this way. When we sit here in this moment of time of which way do you want to go? You know, do you want to do Crate and Barrel one or two? Or do you want to do, you know, Restoration Hardware? You know, I think ultimately we do, we're going to, we want to accomplish a couple of things at once, move the cement, you know, tables into the the park and provide more, you know, amenities to the park, which is a great, great addition. But I'm still struggling a little bit on the immediacy of do we have to do that tonight or not? And and one is like security. If you're going to approve Restoration Hardware or any furniture for $20,000, just looking at it, how you secure it? Motion sensors and cameras are not going to solve the day. It's a, it's a minor deterrent, but I don't know how you secure that with cableing. I don't know, you know, ultimately, you're going to have to take that and put it into either Cafe Verde. We have a, I think, Louise, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, but we have an agreement with Cafe Verde to help us stack them, but we would have to secure them either in Cafe Verde or to that shed that backs up to the to the plaza. So you know, that's one that we have to solve because I will never ask you to approve a 20, 30, $40,000 expenditure for furniture if I can't secure it. You have to secure it. You're going to have to put it somewhere daily. And so that's an issue too, from a stat. We don't have the staff to do that daily. So those are some pretty big things we need to think about. And I just wonder, Louise, and to the team of, is there still an exigency? Can this go into our six month master planning process and step back and go again, where are we putting the tables? How are we spending the money? And again, maybe we also add those other amenities in the phase three and complete it all at once. I just, and it gives us a little bit more time. I think we're pretty far along with your great work. I'm just hearing the conversation and here stepping back and thinking about it. I just wonder, you know, if if we're better served that way. But again, if, you know, this is a great report, a lot of great work's been done. We can always figure it out, but it's it's just time and money. And again, I, there's other areas in town that are exigencies right now that we need to get done. Restoration Hardware gave us a pretty big discount, which I think we appreciate, but it's a big expenditure and I'm you know, I just, I just want to say it. I feel like, again, it's not the world according to Todd, and I'm not trying to stop this effort at all. I think when I sit back and I've listened to the team, we have a great commission and it's led by Louise and Pat Rivasio and the others. They've come up with some really amazing things that our staff would have never thought of to bring to the commission. And so it's really exciting. This is one of them. I mean, there's a lot of potentials for this, this plaza. But again, I'm excited about what Ashley and the team's doing with the big picture of having this process of like, how are we going to move all these pieces? You just heard three of them from Luis right now. We're going to move this here. We're going to solve three things at once. So it's just not this project. But I just wonder, you know, as we talk about bathrooms and all the other things we're talking about, if we're better served to really get the feedback, hey, we like the furniture concept, figure out how to secure it, figure out where you're putting everything else, and how are we moving all the pieces? And how much money are we spending over the next two to three years with our capital projects within the parks? Because I do think we have a little bit of time now. If you asked me this four months ago, I might have been in a different place. But I think a lot of good work's done. We don't have to stop it. We can continue it through the the process. And I just, I wanted to say that because I I'm struggling a little bit with the conversation.
One piece of information I'd like to share, just to give a time perspective for everyone's consideration is that the timeline of the master plan is that we're collecting all of the feedback from the community this summer and it's going to be evaluated and where it's going to be shared out through community discussions this fall, September through November, that we wouldn't be coming back to council to make any budget requests related to the master plan until at earliest, you know, in next, next spring. So if we wanted to have something that's usable in the park or in the plaza now, that's why this this urgency is brought up.
Thank you, Ashley. Bob, was that a, was that a hand?
Yeah. So if we were to put this off tonight, that means furniture doesn't go until when? Sometime if we do the master planning process, wouldn't go until like late next fall or winter, Ashley? Or whoever can answer that?
I can maybe answer that. If we come back to council in the town with recommendations and a master plan based on all of the community feedback assessment and a determination of priorities and budget, we would be looking at furniture that might get installed summer of 2022.
Whereas if we were to do something tonight, this would be installed when?
Depending on the option that we go with, it could be immediate. One of the options, the all furniture is available right away. It would take probably two weeks. The other options are a little bit longer lead time, maybe six, four to six weeks.
A bit longer. But either way, we'd be installed for the summer, the summer.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Lila, did I see your hand?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Louise, for your work on this and the work of the Parks and Rec Commission generally. My family, we spent a lot of time at Town Plaza. We love that space. It's a great community gathering space and I I understand why the picnic tables were put in there, but I definitely think it's worth thinking about some upgraded furniture options there. So thanks for your work on that. I have a few questions. So for the Crate and Barrel options, I think someone mentioned the wicker. In my experience with stuff like that, it's just become unraveled. You've got kids sitting on it. It seems like there's a real durability question there. On the cushion option, have we thought about who's going to, like, do those need to be washed or, you know, what sort of care they would need? And I guess sort of related to that, it feels to me like looking at it like the Crate and Barrel options are very similar and really suffer from similar issues. They both kind of have durability issues in my opinion. Was there an effort to find a bid that where the furniture is more similar to the RH Restoration Hardware option? But maybe, you know, in a different, in a different price range. And then my, sorry, should I take these one at a time? I have another question, but I don't want to. I know I'm going to. Another question is why is the Restoration Hardware estimate, it says estimated bid, whereas the Crate and Barrel ones say firm bid? I just didn't know what that distinction means. And then just in terms of a master plan, I guess my, you know, one of my concerns would be making this kind of an expenditure and then working out a master plan that that isn't consistent with this furniture so that we're in a position of, oh, well, now we've got a master plan, so we need new furniture. And just wondering if there's been thought given to, even though we don't know what the master plan is going to be yet, but kind of given to, you know, how this would fit into it.
Okay, I think I have all the questions. Let me try and answer those. Just for clarification, the wicker is a synthetic wicker. So I understand the concerns about wicker deterioration when it's kind of a straw composite, but this is, I think it's polyethylene. So it's a synthetic intended for outdoor use and durability. The cushions are a sun umbrella or similar type of covering. So they are also intended to to last with both sunlight and rain if necessary. But the cushions would be one item that Kathy Verde would take inside if we had cushions because we don't want to leave them outside, both for concerns about theft and also just because that, you know, then we don't have them exposed to elements unnecessarily.
Do they need to be washed?
They're spot cleaned.
Okay.
And the color that we would use is a sort of a slate gray, charcoal gray. So they're dark, a little forgiving for spills. You asked about other possible designs for furniture. I looked at quite a lot. And the challenge that we ultimately came up against was finding things that had both large and small tables to have the flexibility to have things that looked consistent, uniform and integrated. So I would, I found some really interesting farm tables, for instance, but they didn't have a complimentary square table. And we really wanted it to all feel like it fit together. If you look at the plaza right now, there are the concrete tables. There's some furniture that Cafe Verde has in the space where they serve. There's some other little tables and chairs that are sort of remnants from a previous amount of furniture that Cafe Verde had. It's a, my grandmother would have said higgledy piggledy. I say janky. It just doesn't all fit together. So we're really trying to solve for that. Could we keep looking? Absolutely. But I did do quite a lot of looking about to see what we could find. The question on firm versus estimated bids, the original work that we did back in December last year, when we were first exploring this was was with Restoration Hardware because we thought it would be a great opportunity for us to work with a local company. And their furniture is incredibly high quality. They were offering us a 40% discount at that time and they gave us a bid on a different spec, different number of tables, inclusive of some things that we're not pursuing at this point. When, when we got on the agenda for this commission meeting and knew that we needed to tighten up our bids, I endeavored to get back in touch with Restoration Hardware to tighten up bid with the new spec on the furniture. And I was not able to get their response. So I took the original bid and I did the math myself and estimated shipping and tax based on my math. I think it's pretty close. The other two bids are firm bids. Crate and Barrel was very responsive and came back quickly with an all inclusive bid with shipping and tax. And finally, the question around the master plan. I just want to make sure I understand your question. I think you're asking, well, you could be asking two things. You were asking about whether or not the plaza would ultimately fit with the rest of things that we might recommend through the master planning process. Is that a question around aesthetics? Or is it a question around priorities and other things that we might do with this money?
No, it's more, I guess what I'm really trying to understand there is, you know, it feels to me when you do things piecemeal, there's always a risk that later on, you're going to have a plan and something that you just bought not that long ago, you decide actually doesn't fit into your big plan. And so this is something my husband yells at me for all the time. Someone always finds out and then deciding it doesn't work and find something else.
It's a good point, right? I like that blue vase. We are intending to solve Town Park Plaza as a total, a total location. And because we're looking to get get it fully furnished, I don't think we're going to have a question around kind of a piecemeal approach because other locations that we're going to be looking at as part of the master planning process in Town Park over at Cove San Clemente, the community center, those are discreet visually from Town Park Plaza. So I think we have some over at Cove San Clemente, the community center, those are discreet visually from Town Park Plaza. So I think we have some flexibility. But I will say that I think some of the tenants that were going after this furniture would remain, which is durable, flexible, high quality. Comfortable.
Great. Any other questions? And if not, I was going to ask about security. So I'm glad that, that you guys discussed that. Thank you. My only other question was when I was reading through the staff report, I saw total seating is estimated at 72 to 80, and that struck me as high. And so I, you know, it, it's entirely possible that there's, you know, a, an analysis that went into that. And if folks feel strongly that that is, you know, that's the amount that we have demand for, then let me know. And I'd love to just hear a little bit more about that. But if not, I was wondering, just given, you know, that seems like a market increase over what we have now. I don't, you know, driving by, I don't think I all that often see it, you know, packed to capacity there. So I was wondering if, if it might make sense to start with half or two thirds of that amount and then, you know, buy more as demand might require. You know, if, if my colleagues feel that that's going in the wrong kind of piecemeal direction, then feel free to shoot me down. But that was just a question that I had is, is where that 72 to 80 number came from?
Something in there that relates to this before you answer. I just remembered, I forgot to ask this too. The, the schematic, the architecture's drawing shows nine of the square tables.
You're right.
And the description says 10. So just another thing to go in there if we're talking about numbers.
Yes. So I rolled it up to 10 because I think that there's space to have another table placed. And we wanted to have as much flexibility as possible. You're right. He shows nine. He also shows some small tables, which could be high tables with bar stools up against the wall. And I eliminated those because it seemed outside, it seemed more bar-like in setting than kind of community gathering, the kind of community gathering space that we're trying to create. So I increased the square tables by one. So the math on the seating is real based on 10 square tables with four chairs each, plus the bench seating and the, and the side chairs that go with the long tables. The long tables, depending on the manufacturer, vary a little bit in length. So the number of people that could be seated there will vary a little. That's where the 72 to 80 came from. And if I had to estimate seating, you know, that's there right now between the six concrete tables and what Cafe Verity has, I'd say it's, you know, not 50.
Right. So, and this is not to, to knock it all, but I'm just trying to understand. So the, the number that we came to of 72 to 80 is based on the maximum that would comfortably fit, not based on any analysis of like demand or that sort of thing, right? Or, you know, a program, so to speak.
That's correct. Because we don't know what demand we might be able to actually generate if we start to get people to use the plaza more.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only questions. Any other questions from council members before we go to the public? And if not, we're going to open this up to public comment. So any members of the public who would like to speak on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org and we'll be doing three minutes a pop. And we will start with Suzy Beatty.
I didn't know I'd actually hit that.
Oh, okay. So no comment?
Okay. I feel, I want this to happen so badly, but I really feel like I've got this thing in my head that I'm very worried about. So did you say, I believe, that Cafe Verity people were going to take care of putting the chairs and tables in and out every night? Did I, I, I guess, can you answer that to me or am I just commenting? Well, anyway, I thought that's what I heard. That, that they would be taking the tables in and out. And I just don't see that Cafe Verity will be able to be responsible for that. It's a huge number of, of things to do. And the timing, how about the timing of it? When they open in the morning, does that mean they're going to put the chairs out whenever they happen to open and the tables? And that, it just is kind of a worry to me that they would actually have the staff to be responsible for that much stuff. And again, it's just coming from somebody who has such full support of this project. And I, I feel terrible that I have these thoughts that things might, that might not go smoothly. But anyway, if maybe that could be evaluated, we're sure, you know, that that's going to be an okay thing. I guess that's all.
All righty. Thank you, Suzy. And we'll, we'll address any questions when we finish public comment here. I'm not seeing any other hands up right now. Rebecca, did we get any emails on this item?
No, we did not receive any emailed comments on this item.
Okay. And we've got a hand from Pat now, so we will go to her.
Apologies, my timer seems to be misbehaving.
My allowed to talk button for Pat is not doing anything.
Let me see.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry for the, the late jump in here. Louise did a great job on behalf of our committee, both explaining this and also really leading the way on the research. And just to put things in perspective, I'd like to say that just down the road in Larkspur, there are tables and chairs outdoors at Backstage, at Pico, at Perry's now, at Left Bank, at Rully. And they don't seem to have a huge problem keeping them secure at night. So I just think that that's kind of coming out of a place of fear. I think we can solve it. And I don't think we're that much, and we're a little bit closer to the highway. But I just think that we, we should not be running away from things that we know would be a wonderful addition to our community because of fear. One thing I found just from the dog park is that the value of this kind of space, we're actually creating community rooms without walls. And they're much, much less expensive than building whole new community centers. And because of our wonderful weather, they work. They bring the community together. I think the return on investment for doing this and doing it now and not waiting a year, I think the, with regards to the master plan, I think that, I'm looking for my timer here. Oh, I don't see it's on. In, in, in terms of the master plan, we know the community wants to get together. We know that COVID has eroded the community network and the community web that we used to have. And we know people are craving coming back together again. And right now, we, we got a, a big step done with the awnings and the, and the roller shades. But then when you walk in there and you see those same concrete toadstool elementary school tables, it's just a real letdown. So I feel like we're selling ourselves short if we don't really do this and, and do it now. I think we can get back to you with the details, but if we can get kind of an acknowledgement that you do want to go ahead, maybe we will wait another month while we, while we put the, dot the i's and cross the t's on this. But I really encourage you to, to do this for the community. I think the community needs it and deserves it. And I think they'll really appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Pat. And we're going to go to, it's either Dan or Eileen next.
Eileen Phipps, yeah. I, I want to just kind of take off on what Pat said. I, I think that COVID has changed us as people and as a community. We are desperate to get back together again. We want to gather and we need community spaces to do that. And outdoor is safer. And people, you know, whether we're going to throw our masks down and, and kind of, I, I, I don't think so. I think people are still hesitant to gather indoor. And creating outdoor spaces during this time and going forward are really important. And Coruña Madera is a community of friendships and kindness. And I think this is really important for our community, create gathering spaces safely outdoors. And that was the whole intent. And I don't think that has changed. I know that, you know, guidance is, you know, people are wanting to throw open the doors, but we're not there yet. And, and I hope that we can create spaces for us to gather and be together again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I do not see any other hands up. And I believe we already checked for email comments. So we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council for a discussion. Would anybody like to start us off? Yeah, Charles.
Well, I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec Director and Commission for bringing this forward and trying to help, you know, us during the time of COVID in particular, coming out of that and not feeling as though it's, it's so emergency. Just with furniture packages, when I've seen them, when I've presented them or seen them presented by other, you know, institutions, there's a lot that goes into them. And I just am not seeing enough to make a public approval of, of, of a furniture package and what was presented either in the staffing report or in the, in the presentation. The other thing is, is, you know, while Restoration Hardware and CB2, Crate and Barrel are, are fine institutions, you know, that usually those are more domestic rate furniture. And, you know, I'm used to see more contract vendors or pre-approved public vendors that provide public furniture with the specs that are, are kind of understood at that park landscape architect level. You know, a lot of stuff that's trending that I saw, that I, that I would like to defer to the, to the master planning is that usually now color, color, color and feel of the brand of the town and the town park can be worked together in furniture, just like the signage and wayfinding program. And I see a lot of the, I've seen a lot of institutions that when they pull that together, it's really good. You know, some of the synergies of ultimately kind of going with, once you pick a contract vendor or, you know, a pre-approved public vendor and they have a whole suite of style, you can apply it to a lot of different places. But then if that place changed, you know, you're able to basically bring chairs from one place to the other. And there's not, you can have attic stock and you can quickly replace them. And I'm not seeing a strategy for that when some of these tables and chairs go down or need maintenance and that kind of thing. Because usually you have back stock. So, and then the, the other thing I'd really suggest that would help is every time we, I've done a, a large furniture package, the vendors will provide mockups for you to test on site and for the approval of the budget to be done by the project managers or council or whoever. So it's really hard to go from a picture that's staged versus seeing them in person and sitting on them with furniture. And this comes from people that, you know, had a lot of experience at the airport with people sitting on furniture. The security apparatus that fixes furniture is a really important thing. It can make or break the experience for a user. So I really need to understand what that is and whether it's aftermarket, applied to something that was never meant for public. And so therefore they don't even have an integrated security system. I do not think that ultimately we should rely on non-public staff to take care of public furniture, move it. Because of the responsibility of it, like some of the public members have spoken, you know, who wants to put that on whatever institutions renting out that restaurant? You know, I, I could entertain, and I think it is a valuable thing for the town. Based on those things, I could see you come back in a month. But I just wanted to put my output out there and see how the other council members feel. You know, one way to achieve it ahead of time that doesn't take council approval would be private donations or, you know, at least something in between or other grants. But at this time, I, I just don't have enough to feel comfortable to just select a furniture. And I'm sorry, because I know it's really important to many people in the community. But just because of my long-term experience with these things, I, I would just want to see more.
Charles, good, good points raising. Quick question for you, just based on your experience. And I'm asking because I don't know. Does a, does order of this scale, when we're talking about volume of 72 to 80, you know, furniture items, does that approach something where you, you could see vendors potentially doing things like mockups are kind of the, the more kind of concierge service? Or would that be more something we'd expect to see only on the volume of like, you know, outfitting the entire, you know, outfitting all public spaces in town as part of the master?
I mean, you know, workstations, offices, you can do small offices and they'll still give you a chair for the employees to try it out, right? So it depends on the vendor. And, and if you go to a storefront, ultimately, because it's not your profession, right? But it's an interest. They're not as equipped ultimately. And that's why there are specific like dealers that don't have showrooms, but have the access to have them delivered and that type of thing. You know, so, you know, that, that's just my feedback. I definitely don't want to diminish the work that Luis and many other people on the, on the Parks and Rec have done. And even, even I was interested during the time, you know, to see if Restoration Hardware ultimately would improve the town. But, you know, I, I think that's how, it's quite a, a large unbudgeted item at this point. So.
All right. Thanks, Charles. Who else would like to speak? Yeah, Bob?
Charles, I understand your concerns, but it sounds like you're talking about larger furniture packages. When you're talking about airports and things like that, is that?
So I've done large ones up to 300, 400,000, but I've also done $15,000 packages for other public institutions. And they're all structured the same usually. Once you see one, it should be the same. But I, I just haven't, I have no experience with this. So in this format, for those kinds of quantities and for that cost. So I personally am just not, it's not enough for me to make the decision from everything I know that would really impact it for the long term for the community. So.
Do you think there's a need for us to do something to try to create more community space quickly, given what we're coming out of with COVID?
So while that space is functional as it is, you know, I think that there are other places that are also important to the community. There are a lot of other regions. And so by prioritizing that one and basically spending more to, to, you know, move that one forward at the expense of other areas and not really fully grasped or understood. Because I'm not on the commission, you know, that makes the decision for the Parks and Rec. It's hard for me to understand what this would impact as far as longer term goals at this point. And so, you know, and, and that's, that's, once again, if, if it was, you know, I saw some of that quick, quick strike stuff that happened at Minkie Park. And, and definitely, you know, the concrete benches are a little bit better than that. But, you know, strategically, also if you do larger bid projects for all the furniture, right? And then have a maintenance and, and replenish contract, you can definitely get a lot more cost savings. So I just, you know, those are things that I consider. And, and what I would like to see as a, as a town council member that's making the, the decision about budgets for everything.
Okay, thank you. Am I still on?
Yeah.
I guess, okay. I think it's really important for us to create better community space right now. I think the community needs it. And we have had three Parks and Rec Commission members, I think, working on this for several months, one of whom I know quite well, as you all know. But they put a lot of time into this. They put a lot of thought into this. They have considered all the other possibilities in town. They settled on this as a place to, to do this. I think Louise has done a really thorough job of analyzing options with furniture. And I think we have an opportunity here to create a space, which I have also worked on with Community Foundation for years, putting in the, the sun structure and everything else. But really making it and taking a leap forward and creating a better community space now. And I don't want to diminish the amount of money we're talking about here at all. It's a lot of money. But it's also, in the scheme of things, it's a way to really create, I think, a fundamentally important space. Make it a lot more important for people, make it a lot more accessible. I mean, I, I was there Friday night for dinner. There were, the place was full. It was like 5:30 on a Friday night, which admittedly was a busy night. It was nice weather, but you know, the shade structure is much better now because of the shades. We have an opportunity here to really, really do something good and do it now and do it in time for summer and warm weather and really make this thing happen. And if we take any of these other paths, we're a year out. We're going to miss it. And I think the time to do it is now and figure out what we need to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Who else would like to speak? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, I too. Louise, I appreciate all the work you've done on this because I know you're really working hard on this in the master plan. You're juggling multiple things at once. And same thing, Ashley, I appreciate all the work you're doing on this also. For me though, I think, I'll chime in, Charles has more expertise than I do in this area. If I buy furniture, it's an umbrella for a backyard and that's about it. But I think for me, one of the key things, it's the security piece of it. But I think for me, one of the key things, it's the security piece of it. Because the way I look at it, it's an investment that towns is investing in. And if we're going to spend twenty thousand on furniture and all of a sudden we wake up one day and the next morning, half of it's gone. I just think that piece is missing. And I think I agree also what Suzie said is that, you know, Cafe Verde said they were going to be doing some of this stuff. But is that a commitment? How's that going to work out? I think for me, there's just certain things that I need to get answered before we can move forward. One thing I would suggest, and the other thing is, I'm sorry, I kind of agree with what Eli said before, is do we need to come out with a package that's going to seat whatever, seventy-five to eighty people? Should we scale it down and maybe go half, which cuts the cost down? And then we can expand from there. And if we find out a month from now or two from months from now, hey, this is really successful, we can add to that instead of going the other way, is having furniture for eighty and then only half of it's filled. One thing, if it's, I don't know if it's possible to do, because I also agree with Bob is saying, is there's a certain amount of urgency to do this and I don't want to wait until spring of next year. It doesn't do us any good. Is there a way that you could come back? I think we meet June first or June second, Eli, I can't remember.
Second?
Yeah, and I know it's a really short timeframe and I don't want to put pressure on you or anybody else on the subcommittee. But is, would it be possible to come back at that meeting with the answers to some of these questions to make us feel more comfortable, including those that Charles had? I didn't know anything about warranties or anything like that. And then addressing the security questions, you know, Cafe Verde, are they reading on board? You know, you could probably talk to RJ about how to secure this stuff or CMPA. And this way, I think what it does, it gives us us the opportunity to have more information that may be able, may be able to give us that to have you have a decision at that point in time. And it only delays it a couple of weeks, which hopefully shouldn't be too much. And just my two cents, because again, I don't know furniture that much. Off the top of my head, I would toss out the Restoration Hardware stuff at double the cost to me to spend forty-some-odd thousand, which it's an estimate I know you put together. To me, it's just way too much money to spend. You know, if you even come back with maybe one or two of the other recommendations through the Park and Rec Commission, so that would help us also. But I just think we need more information at this point in time.
Mr. Vice Mayor? If I may, because I honestly, I mean, this conversation has gone longer than our climate action assessment, which is shocking and I appreciate it. What I'll say is June, the next meeting is booked, we have the the budget and we will not be able to take this up. It'd have to be the second meeting. I guess, if the council, I I guess it is, I first, I think the first question to challenge council with this, do you think this is, as Councilmember Ravasio spoke to, I think, pretty eloquently, necessary now? The timing's now. Or as Councilmember Lee talked about, you know, more information, look at, you know, public vendors and and do more of a process. Order, what you're saying is answer, answer, come back to you with a few questions. I guess the direction of of the will of the council, which way to go? We could certainly, you know, put something together and bring it back to you. But I think for me, it's the most important thing is, is the time now to do this? And if it is, fine, we can, we can come back to you, I think, in four weeks. Not this next meeting, but the following meeting and answer your questions and and move it with a process. Or we, we punt to the bigger process of of the master plan. I'll tell you the security problem. You will not, staff will not be putting that out and putting it away at night. We're not positioned and I'm not going to hire two full-time. I don't think we want to hire two full-time people to do that. We don't have staff here on weekends to do that. They're focused on the infrastructure, we are not positioned to do that. My understanding was, because this is a benefit, it's not for Cafe Verde, it's for our community. But it also benefits them, right, to have a plaza like this, that that benefits them. And I think there was an agreement and some conversation and I wasn't involved in it. But I, as I understand it, Louise, please correct me, but they were motivated to assist us in some way. And so there might be a combination thereof where we can close the gap a little bit to solve that problem. So I definitely, as as, you know, Pat Ravasio stated, I don't want security to be the reason why we don't do this. We can solve that problem, I'm pretty comfortable with that between both the town and Cafe Verde in an agreement. But I think it's just the timing, do we, do you want to, do you feel, you know, the necessity, is it necessary to do it now? And if it is, maybe give us a budget range and we can come back to you. And I think three or four weeks with Luis and the team and 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 answer your questions. Or do you want to punt this through the process, the master planning process?
Can I just jump in real fast, Charles?
The budget thing, so if you could just tell me which budget this is coming out of and ultimately if the monies are?
We don't have a budget, we don't have a budget, so.
So the other thing is, is to make a decision is to understand what it would affect otherwise.
Okay, so, okay, so it's a fair, so I'll walk you back. So when council approved the hundred thousand dollar budget to help the the businesses. So we had that, let's start there. And so what we did is we took forty thousand dollars of it and we put it towards the gift cards and we immediately just put money back into the economy, helping our small businesses. And we held the other sixty thousand in reserve to understand those businesses. So we went through COVID over the last three months. Do we need heat lamps? Are we going to have rain? Are we going to have cold? Are we going to just have outdoor dining, curbside pickup? How can we help those restaurants stay open? And so we focused there, we helped some of them with their outdoor patios. So some of that money went there. And then we, we had a portion of the money, it was the awning conversation. So we we partnered with the help of Luis, with the Corredum Dairy Community Foundation, and we shared the cost of that awning. So that was a good one, right, to help people if they're going to outdoor dine, if they're going to grab stuff, give them a place to go and congregate, as Councilmember Ravasio said. Then the next piece was this discussion and it was a more, it was a bigger discussion, because it was a much bigger project, but we dialed it back to what you're talking about now with furniture. And so theoretically, if you wanted to support a place of gathering and restaurants for people, like to give them, you know, through our gift card program, get something locally and then go enjoy yourself here at our plaza in this nice space where people can congregate, bringing back community, I think our community needs that, as Councilmember Ravasio said. Like, let's give them a space to congregate, this is the place to do it, right? Let's bring them to us. And so that, that remaining forty thousand, you know, but this is turning into a bigger project. So I don't know which way you're going to go on this, but theoretically, if you spend forty-three thousand, plus you put security features in, let's just say this is a fifty thousand dollar project, that's the fund that you would take it from. You would take it from the remaining fifty thousand dollars that we allocated for businesses, support of the community through COVID, that's the fund, there is no other funds.
COVID Reserve Fund for emergencies for all town, it basically relief. So then, you know, to Bob's question is, how do we feel about doing this? It's, there's still immediate need. We opened up this summer, we really are, you know, you're talking about tourism and encouraging people to come to town and do those kind of things. You know, fifty thousand is more than we have budgeted forties right there. But really, do you, as a town manager and your other directors, feel comfortable liquidating all of that for this last thing, thinking it's all going to go away? Or do you, would you want to keep some of that? Or would you think that it's prudent to keep half of it still in reserve for other unknowns? Or, and are we also going to get reimbursements that are going to come in, that are going to help replenish this money that was already spent? And, you know, I mean, those are also some of the things that I think are really important to consider in this. So, you know, and then I, and then, yes, if we, I get that information, I can definitely make a decision in a month. And if I have, we can go, just like we do when, you know, they put up polls so that we can understand what the impacts are on the community and there's one or two out there that we could each go try, you know, over time. I think that's really good, because, you know, that, I just, my other, other people, I've, in other packages I've seen, you would never get approval unless they put it out into the public eye and some everyone, including the people making the decision sat on it before, for that kind of budget, but.
Right, and in the budget process, we have our, you know, I think there's a portion that would come from our unrestricted, you know, general fund. I mean, we, we have monies to your question, but, you know, again, something at some point is going to be compromised on this. You know, for me, what I would be comfortable with at our current stage is splitting the difference and and keeping twenty-five thousand of that allotment from that council gave me to help businesses available in the immediacy. And it takes twenty-five thousand dollars and have this furniture conversation and say it's a do not exceed. And so staff and team get to work and come back to us with your ask, it's twenty-five thousand. And if you want to close the difference, you get donations and you close the gap, just like the whole intent of the plaza was always that. You know, the town put eighty thousand dollars in for that, that structure that you see there in the Corredum Dairy Community Foundation, or, you know, raised tens of thousands of dollars as well. That's always been how that has been raised and and our intent and philosophy. And so that's what we'd have to do. So that's my recommendation, I think we're there now. I mean, we've had good conversation and I think we've had good comments from the council. I think I understand what you're asking of us. But I think it'd be helpful to have a do not exceed. And I, you know, honestly, I don't, at this point, if you're going to, based on your question, Councilmember Lee, it'd be like a do not exceed of twenty-five thousand. And that gives me flexibility on both sides to help businesses, but really move a special project. And as the mayor said, you know, get it started. Maybe it's not the totality of the, you know, eighty-two, eighty spaces that we're making, but it's it's at least half or three-quarters of that and it's a good start.
Right, and so also I have seen programs where they go and do smaller, quick-action things like this to try out a whole set of furniture, but then use it for the master plan for an entire airport, right? So it's like, we think this one's what we want, it's got the right color and it's got this feel and we could roll that out, you know, to campus-wide, right? But then you put it out there and you see what the flaws are and then you can readjust before you do the bigger, like, and it can inform the plan. So I also have seen that, so it's not that it has to be part of the bigger plan and you already know and you just go in, you can use it as a test bed to understand that. But consider those things, because it'll make the planning for the overall much better in the long term, I guess.
So let me just float this in case it maybe breaks the logjam. For, I've got no interest in the Restoration Hardware set, that's too expensive. But I would be open to, I understand Bob's point about the urgency of wanting to catch the first non-COVID summer. So I'd be open to, to, you know, some amount of funding that maybe correlates to like fifty to sixty, you know, seating for fifty to sixty that we could authorize for right now, but maybe authorize it if if this is possible and if if council and and staff are comfortable with it, offer, authorize it on the condition that it only goes through if, you know, the town manager or, you know, some designee can, you know, decides that they're comfortable with the security provisions. I don't know if that helps, but I put that out there, yeah, Fred?
I'd go for that.
Yeah, okay, I can agree with that, no more than X amount, I can't remember what you just said, twenty-five?
I'd say twenty, personally.
Okay, so I agree, no more than twenty thousand, has to include security measures to make sure that that furniture is tied down. It does not include staff, it will not, no staff time is involved putting that furniture away at all.
Right, yeah, Leela.
And I would just add to that, you know, as a lawyer, my, like, lawyer alarms are going off. Even if Cafe Verde says, sure, we'll put it away, you know, it could become that over time they decide it's too onerous or I do have concerns too. Does that mean, you know, I don't even think they open up till like eleven o'clock some days. Does that mean the furniture's not out there for half the day? I just think that there's, in addition to the security question, there's some additional questions there. And for me, if we're talking about the Crate and Barrel option, especially the one that has cushions, I'm still a little concerned about caring for these cushions, like fabric. You know, I just, I'm a little worried about how that's going to be handled. So I guess for me, there's several questions I would want the town manager or some designee to to get resolved before even, you know, I would feel comfortable with that twenty thousand dollar.
Agree. Bob, did you want to speak again?
I was going to say, I think the furniture option was twenty-five, I'd rather see twenty-five. But if it's only going to work at twenty, fine, I just think we need to move on this and get it rolling. We got to do this by summer, we're going to miss a huge opportunity. If you go through downtown Larkspur at night, the streets are full. There are tables everywhere, the restaurants are full. We have an opportunity to create the same kind of community space here in our town and we need to do it and we need to do it soon. Thanks.
So are folks comfortable authorizing twenty grand tonight, provided that the town manager, before this money is spent, you know, gives his approval on on the operational provisions of the situation?
Yes.
And Todd, and Todd, are you comfortable with that?
I don't work on it.
Okay, so, sounds like I think at least four, three or four of us are there, was it? Okay, so do we need a vote on this or is this direction?
I think you need a vote if you're authorizing the expenditure of up to twenty thousand.
Okay, in that case, I guess I'll make the motion, can we have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Fred. And and Amy, was that motion clear enough? We're authorizing a twenty thousand dollar budget amendment for Parks and Rec furniture, outdoor furniture, you know, contingent on, and, you know, wordsmith is how you need to, but contingent on the 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 town manager's approval based on his assessment of, you know, the operational parameters around using this furniture.
That works.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we have motion in a second, Rebecca, whenever you're ready.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Morgan? Councilmember Ravasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you, everybody. And Louise, I I know you got some tough questions, but I thought this was really well-written staff report. So thank you very much for, to you and your colleagues for your work on this and and to the Parks and Rec staff.
Thank you for all the time and all the feedback, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item sixty, which is consideration and possible adoption of resolution number twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one, to create a new position classification titled Recreation Program Manager in the Parks and Rec Department, and I will turn it over to staff.
All right, thank you, this is the second review at council. So again, we we visited last meeting and had the possible consideration of adopting a new position, the Recreation Program Manager in the Parks and Recreation Division. And that is creation of the new position classification titled Recreation Program Management with the salary range of seven thousand fifty-six to eight thousand five seventy-seven per month. And two, an amendment compensation schedule C, mid-management employees to add a new position and salary range. And then again, this is the second meeting of this position and we have adoption of a resolution twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one to propose to you tonight. Just kind of a reminder of what we talked about last meeting is this is really coming from, we only have three full-time positions within the Parks and Recreation Department. Two of those positions are filled, the second one, which is the Recreation Supervisor Position, is vacant, not frozen. So that's an correction to the, to the staff report. But we're seeing the the increased demand already as we're starting to release restrictions and re-invite people back into our programs and our facilities. And we really want to make sure that we're going to be able to meet the needs of the community, because with a year of everybody being off, we really see that we want to be ready to serve everybody in the capacity that they deserve. And everyone's been super patient with with COVID restrictions and staying home. And my opinion is that this is the best position to be filling right now. It's kind of a second right hand in our division. It would be focusing on the programming and the 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 management of programming staff, whereas that would release me to be more of the facilities and the oversight and the vision along with our master plan relating to you as council and to the commission. And and I also suggest that not refilling the Recreation Supervisor Position at this time. See, and then we have a little bit more information on the fiscal impact for you. And if, then again, this position would be a salary scale that would be roughly thirty to thirty-five percent less than my position currently. And all the details are worked out for you in the fiscal impact section of this report. And, sorry, I'm a little bit congested. Go back to the original asks here. We have some attachments for you, it's draft resolution twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one with a classification and job description for Recreation Program Management, including Exhibit A and proposed salary schedule and amendment to a compensation schedule C, mid-management employees as Exhibit B. And second, the draft organizational chart for the Parks and Recreation Department, really outlining more of the responsibilities that we went over last time, last meeting, including the proposed Recreation Program Manager position. Are there any questions at this point?
Did you have more for us, Ashley?
Not, not, not clearly in my head.
Okay, no problem. This is the second meeting at which we're hearing this, so I think we're all pretty familiar with it anyways. So no questions from council for staff, correct? All righty, with that, we'll open it up to public comment. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we have any emailed public comments on this?
No, we did not receive any emails, public comments.
Okay, thank you, and I am not seeing any hands up. So we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. And again, this is the the second meeting at which we've heard this item. Yeah, Bob?
I'll move to adopt resolution number twenty-three slash twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Thank you, Fred. Fred, seconds, and Rebecca, whenever you're ready.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa?
Yes.
And Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Ashley, appreciate it. That brings us to item sixty, which is discussion and direction to staff regarding requests from the Spar Center to adopt resolution number twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one, proclaiming June twenty-twenty-one to be LGBT plus pride month and raise the pride flag at Town Hall for the month of June.
Members of the council, I'll start this one off, thank, I think.
Members of the council, I'll start this one off. Thank, I think Rebecca for putting the staff report together. So this is just, I think, par for course for this meeting. We've had, we have a little bit of everything on here and nothing's ever straightforward. This request started, I think, from a good place. I think this is something staff supports and wants to find a way. Some of our cohorts in the county last year received similar requests. The county in San Rafael, I think, flew the flag and had the pride week last year. We've all, all of the Marin County jurisdictions have received the same request. Rebecca and I had a discussion last Thursday with the county administrator and all the city and town managers on how, you know, we all have the same intent, but how do we go about it? Because, you know, you're setting policy and practice, and it's really important that we all move forward the same way and we don't misstep in what we're doing. And and, you know, by approving a good cause such as this could potentially have ramifications. And one of the things Corte Madera has in play is we need to have the right policy moving forward. And I think, you know, one of the things I I I just, I I really want to, at a high level of the conversation, just kind of share with you the discussion we had with the managers group and and, you know, the display of commemorative flags at town facilities can raise potential First Amendment free speech issues for us, and we want to be careful. And so depending on whether the flag is treated as government speech or private speech on private property, if the town allowed third-party requests to display commemorative commemorative flags, the town could be subject to First Amendment scrutiny for allowing private speech and private on public property. So if a flagpole was deemed to be limited public forum under the First Amendment, the town could not pick and choose the commemorative flags to fly except to the content neutral basis. So we just want to be careful we don't overstep in what our policy is. And so under the government speech doctrine, the town may advance its own speech without requiring viewpoint neutrality when the government itself is the speaker. So as long as the town does not show religious preference or encourage certain vote, a certain vote in an election, we're okay. And so that's really the basis, right? This has to come internally from us. And so based on the direction that council tonight, what I recommend, that staff come back to you and we prepare something for June first, which would still meet the meeting of this request. And we out, we we basically provide you a policy outlining the standards and procedures for displaying flags at town facilities. And the policy would be structured in a manner that treats these types of flag requests as government speech. The policy would prohibit third-party requests for commemorative, I can't even say this word at this late at night, commemorative flag displays and only allows for the display of these types of flags when the request is brought forth by the town council member only, and then authorized by the town council as a whole, as an expression of the council's official sentiments. So my recommendation to you is, one, you know, the town is historic, but we have two flagpoles. So one is by government code is 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 strictly for the American flag. The other one carries the state flag underneath it. We can have other types of flags. And so the question to council is, you know, historically, we haven't done this. We don't have a policy for this. We need one. And so if you are interested in this, we could come back to you and work with the town attorney's office. I haven't included Amy yet really on this discussion, but she's prepared to help us in the short timeframe. Come back to you with a policy that really separates, so we don't get into First Amendment free speech issues where, once we use that flag for types of requests outside, we get in, we kind of cross that line. It has to come internally. And so I think Amy might want to add to this, but we can do this pretty quickly. And then the other question to you that I would, I would be interested in knowing, you know, if we get flag request or we want to put flags up, are we paying for that with taxpayer money? Or are those flags being provided to us? The other one that I want to point out is Tallow Pike's Drive. We don't only have our flagpoles. We also have the marquee sign. So is it a and or kind of proposition for council that you want staff to consider and come back to you? Do you want to use the marquee sign to 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 send messages in support of certain types of, you know, issues and and equity issues moving forward? Or do you want to strictly leave it to the flagpoles? It's a touchy subject. And one that I I want to point out is, I think when we staff first heard it, I I felt like it was a no-brainer, to be honest with you. I I something I think we should support. But then behind it, you think about the other things that come and how our community could react to it, especially when we start talking about social equity conversations, you know, someone putting up the, you know, those those lost in battle, you know, and and putting up, you know, missing in action flags and or the thin blue line on the law enforcement side. Black Lives Matters, you know, you start getting into, you know, the political side on the magna conversation, right? We're going down a path. We need to really have a policy set. And so just based on my brief email conversation with Amy, she's situated based on how you want to move forward with this. We'll bring something to you quickly. So you can react to it. But I think the the key part is, whatever we decide if we're gonna, if we're gonna fly a flag, that it should really come from a specific council member to the council as a request. And this is really, you're confirming as a council, your sentiments as a council of how you feel. And I think that that allows us that protection. And I think Amy can speak to it much better than I. But I think that's on a policy standpoint, it's really important that we have something in place. And with that, I'll stop, Amy, if you have anything to add to the conversation.
Yeah, I I would, I would add that it's, we have some flexibility. We can, we we could take requests from third parties. And it still could be maintained as government speech, but I really, I I would urge council to let us develop a policy so that we 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 don't get into a situation where our flagpoles have become forum, public forums that as a government asset, we want to, we want to keep some protective element to it. I think we can still as a, you know, as a town support causes, but it's really important to to think about what kind of guidelines and policies we have, and and we can do that quickly. And but I I think it's important for for us to have the policy in place. And, you know, I think we could actually bring the policy on this item back together, adopt the policy, and then if it were, is the pleasure of the council to also approve the flag at the same thing. But I I think it's it's more most prudent to get that policy in place.
Okay, thank you, guys. I have some quick thoughts that I'll save for after public comment. Do we have any questions right now for staff on this item? Yeah, Fred, and then Lila?
Yeah, too. Amy, would that also include, and Todd, would that also include the digital marquee that Todd was mentioning, or is just specifically for flags? And I guess I'm looking more if we can do all encompassing. I think we're better off trying to kill two birds with one stone.
We can, you know, if if that's council's request, I think.
Okay, and I have one more for you, which I think I figured out the other day because we walk a lot, is underutilized. Is that on San Clemente, we actually have the ability to put up banners off the light poles, which the last time I can remember they were used for, I think, was Oktoberfest a couple of years ago. So is there some way we can build policy around that also? Because I think a resolution like this, again, I know we probably can't pass it tonight. To me, I I would like to embrace it like totally. And if we can put up not just a flag, put up banners, use a digital marquee, I would rather see us embrace the package instead of just one thing. But if you include the banners in there, because I have no idea how that even works. And just real quickly, I didn't know one thing with Todd, I mentioned him, they're underutilized to me because we should, again, hindsight's twenty twenty, we could have been using them to promote town businesses through COVID, like the banners we have around town. So I'm sorry, Rebecca raised her hand, sorry.
Denied thirty vote?
Yes, but also, I I just don't know if if our planning director is still on this call, but I believe that that banner, the banners that hang from this, the light posts are encompassed in the town's sign and banner policy, which is set by ordinance and reviewed through the planning commission. So that would be those those light post banners are are separate from, I believe, the the flag banner discussion.
So really flipping to Amy for a minute. And again, I don't know what that ordinance says or that that process is. But if we wanted to do something, again, not passing this resolution now because it sounds like we need policy, is that something we would have the ability to do, or does it need to go through planning? And would that be to say, I guess, are we back into a First Amendment speech type thing?
I'm I'm sorry, you're talking about whether the council could do a policy for flagpoles, or if you want to look again at the banner issue.
At the banner part of it.
Well, we would probably need to amend the municipal code. Then we'd have to do an ordinance to amend it, but if there's a, if there's something you'd like to change on it, we can definitely take a look at it. Or if you just want at the next meeting to have us do a little a brief presentation on what the policy is for banners. I mean, we could definitely do that as well.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? Yeah, Lila. Oh, yeah, sorry, forgot.
Sorry, we do need to do the nine thirty votes.
Oh, right, right. Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, could we please real quick get a motion to extend our meeting by a half hour to ten o'clock? Thank you, Lila. Fred, looks like a second.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa?
Yes.
And Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. And Lila, it's all yours.
Thanks. Just a couple of quick questions. I just want to make sure I understand the process you guys are suggesting. So you would go back and formulate a policy that the content of that policy would be that we can only entertain requests like the one we got from the Spar Center if it's brought to the council from a council member? Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't, I don't think, to be perfectly honest, I got to go back and look at the cases and I just clearly, but I think it doesn't need to be quite that restrictive. I think if it's, if if the, and 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 so just don't quote me on this because I want to look at it, but I believe it doesn't have to be quite that restrictive, but it, but what we want to do is make sure that that it is something that is consistent with the town's policies and the the town's message, so that it becomes the town's message. It doesn't become a public forum where you can't say no to a request that you feel is not consistent with town practice.
Right, okay. Sorry, Todd, did you have something to add?
I I just think it's a slippery slope. And so you have to think about process of how you get it to a public forum to consider it. And I can just think of a whole bunch of scenarios that gets ugly. And I think, I think the practice of just the discussion of our, Amy's right, and she's, she's the best at it, and they'll analyze it. But I think just hearing from the my other cohorts of just examples that have happened, I think the process that makes it the cleanest for us, it's really about how the council feels about any any issue. And I think it 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 does, it's a strong statement when it's brought up by a council member. A lot of these requests, the council, it's coming to you anyway. You're being requested to do it. You requested on this request, you know, they requested it from you. And so I think you grab it. And if one of you wants to discuss it at the meeting to fly the the flag, then I think we do that. And I think the other thing we should consider is you might want to just designate a certain month or two, a certain time period to do things like this, or you may want to just do it year round. So.
So I guess that's that's my only sort of thought is it seems like there's questions we need to answer about what we want the content of the policy to be. I'm fully supportive of we need a policy. The only times we've done stuff like this since I've been on, it's, we've gotten a letter, someone asking us to do it, and that does seem very sort of reactive, you know, and if we're, we want to do something like this, it does seem like maybe we want to be more proactive about it, or maybe we want to have a policy where we just don't do this at all. And so we don't even entertain these. But I guess for me, there's still questions left about what what do we want the policy to be? So I guess I'm not totally understanding what how you're deciding what you're going to bring back to us.
So I think the key part to it is, one, do you want to do things like this or not? I mean, that's the key question for the council. So if the council's like, look, I think it's to inappropriate use of the flagpole. I think there's other ways. We can take it on a case-by-case basis and use other means. Or we can pass a resolution, you know, for the for the pride month, like we can, we can take out the last statement in the resolution, basically, of flying a flag for a month, but we can still support it. We can still, you know, potentially even put it on the marquee. We could do that now by the resolution, right? You could do that. But if you want to use the flagpole, I think there's a key, a few key pieces just to make sure that we don't get into First Amendment issues. And I do think a good practice is that it has to come from, it should come probably from a council member, and the council member should just, the council should discuss any request if they want to use the flagpole in future discussions. I mean, I think that's the key piece. You know, when you look at, there's a whole bunch of sample flag kind of just pull discussions in this arena in the state that people have already kind of vetted this this conversation. It's one page. It's a real basic policy. There's not much to it. The key is, do you want to use a flagpole for such items? And then think out loud of, you know, what is the council about moving forward of of what you want to fly on that flagpole?
Yeah, Drow's question?
Well, so, I mean, I know as a council, we've all agreed and sent out letters of support and other types of statements, usually non-politically oriented, you know. So I have seen where the council come together and 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 basically done that type of thing, not through the flagpole in particular. But then also, I'd I'd like to understand the institutions that ultimately are making it a political gesture by voting to put it on the flagpole. Are those partisan elections right in those towns? So if it's Los Angeles and it's important for the mayor because his constituency is democratic and he runs as a Democrat against Republicans, it's a lot different than small-town Corte Madera where we're all nonpartisan. And therefore, by taking a partisan stance or or favoring a partisan standpoint, it puts people on the spot that otherwise, you know, I don't feel like that's really the expectation of an elected council member at this level. And so that's why, you know, the flagpole, I saw Bob, maybe you leave the flagpoles alone and you keep it, you know, to the function that it has been traditionally. But then culturally, I think you can, you know, basically, you know, foster a lot of culture. And so to me, the marquee is in front of the cultural center, right? And those those flagpoles I've seen, or what Fred was getting at, you know, San Francisco utilizes those really well, right? It's usually for institutions or cultural events or schools or, you know, that type of thing. And and they're really effective in that way. So I I see them as two separate entities in a way. But yeah, I think a a policy, or at least I understand, if there already is policy for the marquee on the signs, just refresh what that is and how it may differ. And then you know, what the a policy about flagpoles, I think, ultimately, you don't have to recommend one. You can say, these are the two or three most effective and applied across the state, which one, which this council want to hear, right? Like, and that takes the pressure, but they can do the research to get us more information so that we can make an informed decision. Maybe what might be helpful there, because there, you know, I can see staff struggling with coming up with the 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 direction right now.
That's key to that point. There's, there's basically, when you look at the statewide, and again, I, you know, I haven't, Amy and I haven't spent any time on this. And so Amy might have a different concept, but in the top, in the conversations, there's really, there's four key pieces to this policy, and it's basic. And I'm not, the first question is, do you want to use the flagpoles to make a statement like this? And 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 then the other, if you do, there's four key parts. So it's commemorative flags shall be displayed exclusively at the location. In this case, it's town hall. It would be on our second flagpole. We have a second flagpole. The issue with a lot of city and town halls, they only have one flagpole. So you get into problems then putting on the same flagpole as the United States flag. You can't do that. So we're okay there. So check one. Check two is flags displayed are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public. This, the city or town shall display commemorative flags only if authorized by the city or town council as an expression of the city or town's official sentiments. Any such authorization shall be given a duly noticed meeting of the city or town council. And then A to set that section is the city or town council shall only consider a request to display a commemorative flag if the request is made by a member of the city or town council. Commemorative flags shall be displayed for a period of time that is reasonable or customary for the subject that is to be commemorated commemorated, but no longer than thirty-one days continuously. Commemorative flags displayed from the city or town council building shall be considered a separate display of city or town hall flagpole. However, commemorative flags shall not be flown higher than the flags displayed from the city or town hall flagpole peak. I mean, it's basic. There's not much to it. So the question is, just my recommendation, do you want to do it or not? Yes or no? And the second one is, it should, it should probably, it should probably come from a council member. I think as a process, we should talk about, and I think Amy, that's what Amy, Amy's going to do the work on that, you know, council member Morgan. It's a good question that how do we, the process, when it comes in, how do we process that? How do we discuss that and and get it to council or not? Like, right? That's the one, that's the one piece that, that's what we pay Amy for. She'll figure that out. But I feel like it's a basic policy.
Yeah, I mean, that is, that is the basics. You just want to make clear that it is, this is speech endorsed by the government. You're not opening. y- you are not, uh, making your flagpole a public forum. I, I think there, um, I think, I think there's some practical issues about, like, who pays for the flag and whatever. You can get, uh, the case law says you can, you get the assistance of a private party, and that does not turn it into a public forum, so, I mean, I think that's, that's an issue, is, does council, like, whoever is going to bring it forward will either receive the flag or something, and so, but I mean, I think that's kind of more of a, a procedure question. But, but really, the essentials are that you have a process, that you're making very clear, it's government speech.
Great.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ray, I was just gonna add what your cohorts are doing also, when you're ready to hear that.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, amongst, just talking to my cohorts in the county, again, um, this is going to all the councils and boards over the next, you know, fifteen days or so, and so it's a kind of a moving process, but we'll have more for you if you want to discuss this at the next meeting. But I know the county of Marin, I did it last year, they're planning on, you know, flying the flag for the month, so San Rafael, and I believe Nevada, at least from the staff level, believes that that'll happen as well in Nevada, and I know Larkspur just approved it, um, at, at their meeting, the policy that I just read to you was a Larkspur policy that their council approved, uh, last Wednesday. So, uh, so, so those are four for sure that I'm, I'm pretty positive of, and I know the rest of us, again, are having that thoughtful discussion as we want to support it, but trying to figure out the best way to do it, uh, within our county.
Alright, guys, I feel like Amy and Todd have been pretty clear here about the issue at hand and what the recommendation is. Do we have any other questions right now from council members? All right, if not, we're going to go to public comments, so any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcnmail.org. We're gonna start with Dana, and then go to Michelle.
Hello, council members, my name is Dana Van Gorder, I'm the Executive Director of the Spar Center. We are the county's only nonprofit serving LGBTQ people and people living with HIV, and I would point out that we're located in, uh, Corte Madera on Nellan Avenue. I think I'll save the substance of my remarks until, uh, this item comes back to the council, which it appears as though it will. I would just note that, uh, you're obviously a cautious bunch, having listened to the rest of the meeting. Todd mentions that this is a slippery slope, but I would note that this is the only, apparently the only request that you've ever gotten of its kind. And, uh, it was essentially non-controversial, um, in the county of Marin and other jurisdictions, so, uh, I'll be happy to stay in communication with you as the process unfolds and hope that, um, you're able to see your way clear, uh, to do this, and, and again, I can make further remarks, uh, at your next meeting.
Great, thank you very much, Dana. We're gonna go to Michelle next.
Hi there, Michelle here. Um, I'm sorry, it's so late, I'll make it super quick. I am a gay community member, I'm also a member who's actually raises that flag on that flagpole and lowers it on a regular basis, and as a gay member who graduated from Redwood High School, it would make me, um, nothing happier to see gay flags on every flagpole in Marin County. Born and raised in Marin, I serve this community, and for our, our community, for our citizens, especially for our teenagers and our youth who are in the LGBTQ community, this would be a huge plus and a huge, um, step in the right direction. Absolutely support, um, following through with policy, we always have to, but I think raising the flag, the Castro in San Francisco has done it for quite some time, and it's about time that we follow through as well. Um, and Larkspur's done it, and, and like, uh, the previous speaker said, uh, many communities in Larkspur, it's, excuse me, in Marin County have done it. And it really, it makes a big difference for those of us who feel disenfranchised, so thank you for considering this topic, um, and I look forward to raising the flag.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Um, I do not see any other hands up right now. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item?
No, Mayor Beckman, we did not receive any emails, comments.
Okay, so we will, uh, close public comment and bring it back to Council Todd. Why don't you start us off?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Ray, one other thing I want to also preface that I think we can very easily do, and I, I have zero concerns about recommending this as well.
Can't really hear you, Todd.
Todd, you're sounding a little faded.
The time, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Hello, do we copy? Oh, ten-four. Alright, so, one of the other things that I, I may rec- I recommend, and I have zero concerns about this recommendation, that of council, and your first question of, of, if these types of requests, if you support them, I have, I, I don't think there's any reason why you can't approve this resolution as is, um, knowing that we're going to come back with the policy, um, at the next meeting potentially, right, Amy, I don't know.
I, I would just add one friendly, um, friendly amendment to the resolution, and then we could approve it today.
With that amendment, I think we could, if this is the concept that we approve, we could certainly do that tonight, and then we could just bring that policy back to you at the next meeting, moving forward for other types of, you know, just our procedure moving forward, this is a one-time, hey, this is a good thing, we support it, let's approve it, as our speakers eloquently said, and then we'll bring that policy moving forward, so we don't get into any issues of, as we talked about, um, just to be safe, um, we could certainly do that, so I do offer that to the council.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll just, I, I don't want to, you know, make a mountain out of a molehill on this issue, so I would say, definitely bring us back a policy, I thought Larkspur sounded fantastic, one-pager, hits all the right points. I'm happy to endorse this and, you know, adopt it as my own request to the council in the hopes that we would adopt it as our government speech. And if, if adopting the resolution tonight speeds it up, or just makes your lives easier in some way, then I'm happy to do that. Yeah, Fred?
Hey, Amy, what's the amendment to the resolution that you would make?
Um, I would add one whereas clause to read, whereas the city, the town's flagpoles are not intended to be a forum for free expression by the public. Actually, I might add too, and whereas the, the, the town council endorses, uh, nondiscrimination and, and supports, uh,
Civil rights.
Civil rights, thank you.
Okay, and that mitigates any risk between now and when, when we actually approve of, a flag policy?
Yes, that will, well, yes, that will, that will go a long way.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the res- the resolution with the recommended changes from the town attorney.
Thank you, sir, do we have a second? Charles? Already, and Rebecca, could you, uh, vote, please?
Thank you, um. Amy, are you able to email that to me quickly, and then I can change tonight and get that printed out while the mayor's in the building, and
Sure.
are probably going to get kicked out of the Zoom again, because it seems like we've been kicked out every hour on that hour, and we are
I'll do it right now.
On that hour, so I will take that vote, um. Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan?
Yes.
Member Vazio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. That concludes our
I was just gonna say, we, Dana and the audience, uh, I think he left the meeting, he had had comments waiting for us to adopt that resolution, assuming we would adopt it at the next meeting, but it sounds like he'll, he'll be back at the next meeting, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so this brings us to item seven, council reports, and we will start with the town manager.
I, I, I'll save my reports, I'll send, uh, a new email update, and then send it in our, uh, weekly newsletter to save time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's go to Charles. And the report, Lila.
Uh, I just wanted to report that we're continuing to work with the Casa Buena, um, working group. Um, we've, we're working with our new member, Adriana Rapkin, on getting volunteer and donation efforts moving along, and, uh, things are going well there.
Did Eli freeze again?
Eli?
Hello, sorry, did everybody finish?
No.
I'm, I'm back, did everybody else finish their reports?
No.
Okay, go ahead, please.
You want me to go?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, we had a police council meeting, we approved the new budget, primarily up, our share is up a hundred and six thousand dollars primarily because of salary increases. Uh, we had a fire council meeting, and, uh, Ruben gave another report on the fire season outlook, which is grim. We approved a new budget, our contribution is up a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, that's per agency, so that's us and Larkspur. Uh, I also finished my term as chairman, and we voted for and named Eli Beckman as the vice chairman of the fire council, and I had a homeless committee meeting, but we'll talk more about that in the next meeting too, because we have some stuff from that, thanks.
Thank you, sir, and Lila, I should have checked, did you finish? Okay, great, thanks. Fred?
Yeah, I'll just rattle through these due to the time. I attend the MCC, MC Economic Recovery Committee, Ross Valley, Perry Mac, started, we met a couple of weeks or so ago, and then I also attended as an alternate the, both the police council and the fire council, which Bob already reported on.
Great, thank you, and the only thing I'll say is that, uh, for the League of Cities, we're still going through with, uh, finishing up our legislator meetings, and so I'm going to report back on, on what's cooking in Sacramento when that's all wrapped up, probably at our next meeting. Um, we do have an SD two meeting tonight, are there any comments on the draft agenda for the next town council meeting? Alright, so if not, we're going to adjourn the town council meeting and call to order the Tuesday, May eighteenth, meeting of the sanitary district two, board of directors. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Board Member Lee?
Here.
Board Member Mangan?
Here.
Member Vazio?
Here.
Board Vice President Casissa?
Here.
Board President Beckman?
Here, thank you. That brings us to open time for public comment, this is an opportunity for any members of the public to speak on any items not on our agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak will be given three minutes apiece and can either raise their hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcnmail.org. Rebecca, did we receive any emails, uh, public comments for SD two open time?
No, we did not receive any emails, public comments.
Thank you, and we do not have any hands up, so we will close open time, we have no presentations, which brings us to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require any further discussion. Members of the public or the board may pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion. Would any members of the board like to pull any consent calendar items? Seeing none, would any members of the public like to pull any consent calendar items? If you would, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcnmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any email public comments for the SD two consent calendar?
No, we did not receive any email public comments.
Thank you, and no hands up from the public, so we will, uh, close public comment and bring it back to the board of directors for a motion on the consent calendar.
Move four A and four B.
Thank you, sir. Fred, seconds. Rebecca, when you're ready?
Yes.
Board Member Mangan?
Yes.
Board Member Vazio?
Yes.
Board Vice President Casissa?
Yes.
Board President Beckman?
Yes, thank you. We have no public hearings tonight, which brings us to our business items. Our first and only business item is six A, consideration and possible action to adopt resolution number O two twenty-two-one, approving and certifying the twenty-two-one sanitary sewer management plan and overflow emergency response plan, and I believe that's you, RJ.
Thank you, Board President Beckman and members of the board. Today we have the sewer system management plan along with the overflow emergency response plan up for consider, um, consideration of possible adoption. Um, these are really important documents to, um, reduce the potential chances of, um, sewer overflows, which cause a, um, a threat to health and human safety. We have, um, our consultant, Paul Cosi, um, who's here, who's going to give a very short presentation, so I won't spend too much time going into the logistics, but I'll turn it over to him shortly. In addition to this being, um, a, an important document, it's also a required document by the, um, state water resource control board, and so, um, we're right on the cusp of needing that to be compliant, and so, um, I want to make sure that gets mentioned, and, um, if Paul is ready and pulled over as a panelist, he is, um, available to start a presentation. And, um, Cosi Consulting is, uh, they specialize in this area of expertise within the sanitary district, and, and, um, he can go into his, uh, many agencies and many products he's done, not only in the region, but in the Bay Area, but he's, he's well, very specialized and qualified in this area. Um, Paul, please take it away.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, I'm gonna turn my screen on and play, uh, the, uh, presentation for you. I appreciate being here today and the opportunity to, I guess I have to share a screen, don't I? Okay, here we go. Okay, very quickly, and I know you've had a long meeting, so I'm going to be as short as I possibly can be, we just want to run through this quickly, so you know what it is you're dealing with tonight. Uh, this is board agenda item six A, the approval of the two thousand and twenty-one sewer system management plan and overflow emergency response plans. Uh, these plans are required, uh, by the state water resources control board's waste discharge requirements for sanitary sewer systems. It was adopted in May, on May sixth, two thousand and six, you have the order number there. Uh, these, uh, regulations were amended in September of two thousand and thirteen and dealt specifically with the OERP and money of the, from, much of the information in there. This, uh, WDR applies to any system that has more than one mile of sanitary sewer publicly owned pipes discharging to a publicly owned treatment works, which clearly is what the district has. The purpose of this reg- these requirements are to, um, protect present and probable beneficial uses of water and to prevent public nuisances in the, in the, uh, environment. So what does it prohibit? Well, it prohibits any discharge of treated or untreated sewage to waters of the United States. It also prohibits the, the results of any discharge of treated or untreated sewage that causes nuisance, according to the California Water Code, and you have the section there. In order to comply with the WDR, the, the agency must enroll under the WDR with the state of California. You must have, uh, designate legally responsible officials who are able to certify, uh, under penalty of perjury, any actions and activities that are taken up and adopted by the, uh, the board. Must prepare and adopt by your governing board a, uh, eleven elements sewer system management plan, and you must also have procedures and policies related to overflow emergency response for any sewer overflow that occurs inside the system or out of the system. Uh, you also have to report all sewage overflows to the state of California's new, uh, database. That database currently includes almost sixty-five thousand overflows that have happened since two thousand and seven. And finally, you're required every two years to do an internal audit of the SSMP, of its effectiveness and findings of any deficiencies that exist, and then every five years, you're required to update the SSMP, uh, having the governing board readopt that document. The required elements in any SSMP you see here on the screen, there are eleven different areas, and in addition, uh, with the two thousand and thirteen monitoring reporting plan, it requires now that there be a change log that identifies and lists any changes that are made in the document, uh, between adoptions by the reporting board of directors. And so you can see the various items that have to be written, these are all items that, right now, provide a single chapter in the document itself, and, uh, but this really outlines all of the activities and actions that are supposed to be covered, uh, by the sewer system management plan. Um, the plans that we have prepared, and we were hired almost a year ago to produce the sewer system management plan update, as well as, uh, working with our subconsultant DKF Solutions Incorporated, uh, we've updated the overflow emergency response plan. We've also updated the, um, uh, sewer system management plan that you see here. My understanding is that you've received copies of those documents, and we're here and prepared to answer any questions you might have on those today. The purpose for the plan is, it's, uh, it's, uh, an outline to properly and efficiently plan and manage, maintain all parts of your publicly owned sewer system. It should result in reduced, um, SSOs over time, as well, as well as outline mitigation that needs to take place. These kinds of things are accomplished through regular cleaning and condition assessment of your pipes, use of any technologies as they're developed, and in the case of your agency, you've brought in smart covers and other, uh, new technologies to assist with, and, and providing advanced warnings of sanitary sewer overflows. You also have provided, uh, pump station supervisory controls, um, SCADA systems, they're called, and those systems also report back to a uni- um, a centralized area that allows for an understanding of what's happening in your system, and you have a, a lot of pump stations, so that's an important factor. You also have to have a prioritized capital renewal and replacement. You also have to have a prioritized capital renewal or replacement program based on priorities of findings based on the condition assessment. You have to have well-trained sewer program staff. And so it outlines some of the training requirements that are in the SSMP and they're coming from the regulations. And finally, you have to establish and track sewer program performance metrics. And element ten and element nine of this particular SSMP provides those that have been identified specifically for. Sanitary District number two. The purpose of the OERP document is to support orderly and effective response to any overflow that really releases from the publicly owned system. It provides policies and procedures that allow you to properly respond. To clean up and report the SSOs to the state requirements and for anything that happens within your district. The OERP is accomplished through timely reporting and certifying under penalty of perjury by your legally responsible official. To all regulatory agencies that are involved, that's the state, the regional board, health department and other, any others like fishing game that might be included. You also have to have individual pump station procedures. And we have gone through and updated those procedures, the staff has copies of those, but they're not required necessarily to be adopted by the board of directors. You also have to do regular classroom training and field exercises. And this contract that included both training for those things as well as for the SSMP. Which we have accomplished during the term of the contract. And then finally, you have to establish event documentation, proper record keeping. And every event that occurs needs to have debriefing and failure analysis, which then leads to. The ability to modify and correct your policies and procedures based on findings from the field. So those are the purposes, both of the two documents that you have. As we went through, we did make several revisions and corrections to the SSMP. And those are listed here. We updated and conformed the document to section D thirteen, which is related to the overflow, the. MRP and the monitoring reporting requirements. We moved, removed all references to the regional board, which is no longer responsible for SSO monitored. We also. Looked through and included many of the provisions from the Riverwatch settlement agreement that you have either agreed to or you're in the process of finishing up or modifying. We included a list of all the capital projects that have been outlined for the next five years. And especially the projects that were listed in the NPDS permit for the treatment agency for your agents are specific to your agency. We've enhanced the overflow emergency response provisions to comply with the MRP. We split the OERP really into two documents. One is called the narratives and the other is a workbook. The workbook provides all of the forms necessary for the field operators. The narratives include the basic formation and provisions and procedures necessary to adequately respond to an overflow. We expanded the field staff and electronic reporting capabilities by providing software capabilities for training. As well as. The opportunity for modules that will assist and provide current training for your staff. And finally, we added the SSMP change log and added the additional changes associated with this. And if you want to see in more detail, you clearly look at the change log to see what else was added or changed in this particular document. So the recommended action today is that if you have any questions that we can answer, we're more than happy to do that. They, you should accept public comments if there are any. And then we, the staff recommends that you adopt resolution oh two twenty twenty one. And authorize the district manager to certify the adoption of the, the SSMP in the state seawich database. And as a final note, I just want to thank your staff for all the support and efforts that we've gone through to get this document corrected and revised. It has been a longer process than we expected, given the pandemic and some of the other challenges that have been out there. But this, I think, is a quality document that we're more than happy to answer any questions you might have as we move forward. And with that, I think that brings us to any questions that you all might have that I can answer.
Thank you very much, Paul, and thank you, RJ, and Fernanda for the clear and concise staff report as well. Do we have any questions from the board for staff or the consultant here? And I'm just trying to scroll through here so I can see, I'm not seeing any shout if I missed anyone. But if not, going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcnmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any email public comments on this item?
No, there were no emails, comments on this item.
Great, thank you. And we have no hands up from the public, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion and a possible motion on resolution number oh two twenty twenty one. Bob?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you, Leela. And Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Board member Lee.
Yes.
Board member Morgan.
Yes.
Member of OZIO.
Yes.
Or vice president Casista.
Yes.
Or president Beckman.
Yes, thank you. That brings us to item seven, district manager and board member reports. Is there a district manager report?
A report today, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any board member reports? Do we have any comments on the draft agenda for the next meeting? Then we are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
That was, that was two discussions that did not go how I thought they were going to go. All right, good night, guys.
Thank you.